Good evening, it's past the six o'clock hour. We will call to order the City of Crescent City regular meeting for Monday, August 21st, 2017. Would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Keim?
Here.
Councilmember Fallman?
Here.
Pro Tem Short?
Here.
Mayor Enscore?
I am here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Legions. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
No actions to report this evening.
Very good, thank you. We will move into a time of public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the Council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include being placed on a future agenda. All comments should be directed towards the entire Council, and any comments that are not at the microphone will be out of order and not part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, would you please state your name and city or county for residency for the record, and please limit your public comment to three minutes. You also have an additional opportunity when we come to specific agenda items. Do we have any general public comment this evening?
Hi, I'm Cooper, and I have a handout here for you, each a matter of great importance to the city and the county. Our scenic gateway is in jeopardy. The beautiful grove of trees that sits opposite the harbor and South Beach currently has a THP in process, a Timber Harvest Plan. Hambrough's Forest Products is going to take one of two paths. Either log that spruce grove and ruin our scenic gateway, or sell that area to the state. The state is willing to buy it, they're in negotiations. The state moves very slowly sometimes, and it would be very unfortunate for this community if we lost the opportunity to acquire that grove. It's ecologically a very sensitive area, but also, as this little handout points out, it serves a very important function. It protects our solid waste transfer station from the full brunt and impact of a tsunami. I have information that I will send to you about that, but large groves of trees are a great barrier to the damage that a tsunami can do. And so, for the benefit of our beautiful scenic gateway, and for protecting our assets, I think we ought to put a little pressure on the state that, yes, acquiring this grove makes a lot of sense, and get moving on it because we don't want to see it left. The owners are open to either path. We, as a community, ask you to please, please, put a little pressure on the state. We want this grove acquired. Fish and Wildlife owns the adjacent property, so they're willing and stand ready to manage that area. So, I'm asking that this be on the agenda, and that we write a letter of support for acquisition of this, our beautiful scenic gateway, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you have any other general public comment tonight? Yes?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Benita Cabrera, and I'm a county resident, and I read in the paper that Rape Crisis has been suggested to receive CBDG grant monies, and I'm here to say that that is the most amazing thing that I've heard in a long time. As you know, Ser Optimus is doing education on human trafficking, and in the past few months, I've received at least four phone calls from people who are concerned about young women who are being trafficked in Delnard County, but currently, there really isn't anywhere for them to be housed. They don't tend to follow and fall into the whole, with Harrington House, they have all of these rules that have to be adhered to, and these people are leaving the most crazy thing you could imagine in your whole world. And so, following the rules of Harrington House is, while necessary for safety of everyone, very difficult for these folks coming out of these situations. And so, Rape Crisis having extra money to be able to house and transport, and maybe get some of these young people back to the states and the counties that they came from, reuniting them with their families. And so, just as a community member, I really was excited to hear that. I'm very sad about the reason for it, but if Rape Crisis can help provide services to these folks that are coming out of the woodwork because of the education that's happening, I'm all for that, and I just say kudos, and thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you. Any other general public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. We'll move on into our agenda. Number one, our agenda, the reports and presentations, the Oregon Resources Research and Education Center representatives were not able to be here, as we were all aware of the challenges in Oregon with the fires, and we will be rescheduling that. I know that this community all sends our thoughts and prayers to all of those who have been affected by these fires in our neighboring communities. We'll move on to the consent calendar. We have a few items here, the warrant claims list for July 29th through August 11th, 2017, the payroll report of August 5th through August 11th, 2017, the budget to actual report for July 2017, the debt policy, which we looked at at our last meeting, and the adjoining Resolution 2017-31, the budget adjustment for the purchase of building, and the Resolution 2017-32. Do we have any questions from the Council regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, do we have any public comment regarding the consent calendar? See none, we'll bring it back. Would you please pull the vote?
Probably a motion to approve consent.
There we go. How about that? Did you just do that?
And I will do that.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion, a second. Now, would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Fallman?
Yes.
Pro Tem Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, very good. We're going to move on. We have a couple of ceremonial items. The first is a proclamation for Ren and Sarah Knoll. We very much appreciate the commitment that they have made, and so I'd like to read this and present it. I guess I'll have to sign it, too. Whereas Ren and Sarah Knoll each have histories that have elevated the importance to them of the need for all children to be able to swim and to feel comfortable near bodies of water, and whereas this is of special importance in our community, which is blessed with wild and scenic riverways, the magnificent Pacific Ocean, and numerous lakes, streams, and ponds, and whereas water is a critical element of our community, not only in relation to recreation, but also for industry, and whereas water safety education is imperative to the safety of our youth to prevent drownings and other water-related accidents, not only now, but as a lifelong skill, and whereas Ren and Sarah Knoll and May of this year held the third annual Knoll Paddle Festival in Crescent City, and whereas the Knolls graciously, and for the third year, donated all the proceeds from the event, which totaled more than $2,200, to provide free swim lessons to 61 of our community youth. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Crescent City, on behalf of our citizens and the families of those children who received this year's gift of lessons, proclaims their appreciation for the ongoing work of Ren and Sarah to provide this much-needed benefit to our community and our youth, given this 21st day of August 2017. Blake Enscore, Mayor. Where are they? There they are. Looking back here, right? Sorry, scanning a little bit across here. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I just would like to say thank you to everybody. This is quite an honor for us to receive this proclamation. It's important for us to see kids learn how to swim, and like you said, this is the third year, so maybe we've got one or two children for three years in a row. So, we feel good about it, you know, making that kind of an impact. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we have two other proclamations that are also very important proclamations, but maybe not as happy of proclamation, but important for an awareness standpoint, and that is, the first, on the Proclamation of Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in California, the third leading cause of death for ages 10 to 24, and the second for 25 to 34-year-olds. And whereas the suicide rate for Delnard County is almost two and a half times the average California county, and whereas 50% of mental illness occurs before age 14, and 75% before 24, and whereas the stigma associated with mental illness and suicide works against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk from seeking lifesaving help, and whereas this causes over 1 million suicide attempts in the United States annually, and whereas suicide is preventable, and prevention starts with recognizing the warning signs and taking them seriously, and whereas by increasing awareness of suicide as a public health issue, zero attempts supports citizens to reduce the stigma by talking about mental health and by gaining new knowledge of suicide and suicide prevention. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Crescent City hereby proclaims September 2017 as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. Be it further resolved, the Council encourages schools, students, parents, healthcare workers, religious institutions, and community organizations to engage in a variety of prevention and awareness activities designed to remove the stigma around suicide, given this day, 21st of August 2017. Blake Enscore, Mayor. Again, I think that representative that would have received this is also from Oregon and is not able to be here. Oh, he is here. I didn't see you come in. All right. Let me do the bullying, and then I'll let you come. Thanks for being here. The second proclamation is regarding to bullying, something that we've all been familiar with in recent years. Whereas bullying is a physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional intimidation to harm intentionally directed at a person or group of people, and occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and on the job, and through technology, and whereas many organizations, school districts, educators, parents, and community members have publicly expressed concern about the bullying of children, and whereas research indicates that bullying is the most common form of violence, annually affecting thousands of California children and adolescents, and whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems, and whereas children who bully are at a greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors, while children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, fearful, and intimidated. Whereas it is important for parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and encourage discussion of the problem at a school, community. Now therefore, it be the City Council of the City of Crescent City hereby proclaims October 2017 as Bully Prevention Month. Be it further resolved, that all Crescent City, California citizens are encouraged to engage in activities designed to make communities safer for all children and adolescents, and show support for students who have experienced bullying, given this 21st day of August 2017. Blake Enscore, Mayor. All right.
Thank you so much. Coming to me and share with us, again, the work that you guys have done, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I have no idea what's going on with my home. I've been down in San Francisco, and just drove up from there, so I decided I can't do anything but worry, and I'm not going to worry, and just take it as it is. Gordon Clay, the CitizensWhoCare.org, Brookings, Oregon, Mayor, Council. With any typical classroom, it is likely that there are three students, one boy and two girls, that have attempted suicide in the past year. According to the CDC, in 2013, 8% of all high school students had actually acted on their suicidal thoughts. This correlates with what Corry County students reported last year in their annual wellness survey. 8.7% of 6th graders, 10.7% of 8th graders, and 10.1% of 11th graders actually said they had attempted suicide in the 12 months before the survey, and that 20% of 6th, 8th, and 11th graders seriously considered attempting suicide during that same period. While the California 2013-15 biannual statewide survey doesn't report attempts, it did report that during the 12 months prior to that survey, 19% of 9th graders and 18.7% of your 11th graders considered attempting suicide. When students learn suicide prevention in school, they're given the resources they need to address their own suicidal feelings and those of a friend. As such, proper education could lead to a dramatic decrease in suicidal thoughts and attempts among teenagers. Actually, it's dipping down into the 10 to 14. That's one of the biggest growing classes right now for suicide. What we have done in the community for last year, with 34 locations in Crescent City and eight in Smith River, is the "Are You OK?" campaign that we had, and with the buttons, the semicolon buttons, as you all remember, and the cars. What we followed that up with was a second program, the Crisis Intervention Program, which is the 741-741 text number, when we found that 90% of teens in crisis will not call a phone line. They don't even talk on the cell phone, but they do text. And what I found last year is I only found one health professional, from Delnord to Langloix, only one, that knew that there was such a number. And what we've been spending our time now is really getting that into people's minds. It's a very easy number to remember. But what I want to tell you about this number is when a call is made on a phone crisis line, it tricks around, and it looks for somebody that's available, and then it finds somebody, and that person comes online, and it could be anywhere from a social worker, a counselor, to a psychiatrist, and all that person has is what's in their mind, what they've been taught, what they've learned. Big difference. With the text number, somebody calls in, "I'm in crisis." You know, 741-741, "I'm in crisis," or "My father's doing this," or "My mom's doing this," or "My sibling," or whatever they type in. While it's looking for that counselor, and what we found is about 40% of crisis texts come in between 10:00 at night and 4:00 in the morning. When kids are in a crisis, they can't sleep. And so, it's searching for a counselor to answer this. Well, the computer is analyzing what they text. Against 45 million texts that have happened in the last three years, and by the time they find the counselor, on the counselor's screen is 72% of the people that text this are in severe crisis, or 42% are cutters, or whatever the computer says, and then it says, "Here's the next question to ask." And this question is updated to the 400 calls that have just been made in the last hour. So, it is very, very current. The other very important thing, or two things about it, is safety. If somebody, say, is observing a domestic violence situation, or a rape, or something like that, if they would call 91, and they have to voice, that violence could come to them, to stop them from reporting anything. Texting? Nothing. Or they could have been abused in a classroom, they're in the cafeteria, something like that. Everybody just thinks they're on Facebook, and they're asking for help, and they're texting back and forth. "What do I do? What can I do?" etc. And the third thing is, that oftentimes in a crisis call, somebody, I mean, on the other end, sometimes they blackout, sometimes they freak, all kinds of things happen, and they forget what was going on back and forth. In a phone call, that's lost history. In a text, that's on their cell phone. So, they can always go back and get the information they need. What I want to tell you that we're doing this year is we're taking that number, and working with the schools, and putting it on... Oh, pass out the rats, actually. You'll see what it is. And I'd ask you to read this pledge, and if it feels appropriate to you, sign it, and then take one of the wristbands. On the wristband is 741-741. It's debossed, not embossed, and it's not filled in, so people don't really notice it. It's just there. And I got these bands one week ago, and one of the counselors in Corry County, just before I presented to the City Council, had gotten a call from one of her clients that she was in crisis, and she wasn't in her office, she didn't know, you know, how to go about it there, and then she thought, "Oh, I've got the wristband on," and she says 741-741. And the kid called that immediately and got the help they needed. What we're doing with the schools, and I'll tell you what we're doing in Gold Beach, and I've talked to Jeff Harris and Steve Godla about this, and the counselors, so we're working to see about how that might work down here. Gold Beach, I presented last Wednesday. They said, "We want to do it," and they got the leadership going. They're doing the whole thing, and they decided to have some classes the first two weeks of school, because that's a high-impact area. When kids come back that were bullied in school, then they had the summer off, and then they come back to school, and all that stuff with the stress of school, and all that stuff kicks back in again. That's a high time for suicide. And the other thing is, at the meeting, at the City Council meeting in Gold Beach, I was talking about that, and they said afterwards, "Can we be the distributor for these? Can we do this?" And I said, "Well, the only thing that I would like is to ask the person to sign that waiver." So, they've got a little chit in the game. Chit, C-H-I-T. And then give them out, and I'll supply all of the bands that they need. We're going to get these distributed as far and wide as we can, and we really want a lot of people to have them on, particularly in September. But one of the neat things about this versus the buttons, which are still all over the place, is I had one girl that has 10 buttons because she's got one on every jacket. But, you know, they don't always end up on the clothes that you wear. Here, I haven't taken this off, and in fact, I haven't taken the bully one off for two years. I shower in it, it wears, it's fine. Wherever I go, it goes. So, it's another concept, and it advertises. It doesn't get covered up with other clothing or something. I see that. The second thing we're doing is bathroom cards. And what these are, and you all saw this big group of them, there's 16 of them, and they go on the inside door of the bath stall in a school, or anywhere else. And I'll read a couple of them to you. It's "Zero attempts, be there for others," and it gives the crisis numbers, but it has scenes like this. Depression and anxiety are not signs of weakness, they are signs of trying to remain strong for far too long. Do not tell me the sky is the limit when there are footprints on the moon. Use what talents you possess. The woods would be very silent if no bird sang, except those who sang best. Be strong enough to stand alone, smart enough to know when you need help, and brave enough to ask for it. to ask for it." And a series of sixteen of those. And oh, what Gold Beach is doing is they're taking them between the two schools, and then about two weeks in, they'll switch to schools, so there'll be all new verses. And any business that would want these, I'd be happy to supply them. Boy, I think I had about everything I wanted to say. "I hope everyone will make a pledge to break the silence around mental health and suicide, and wear a yellow wristband, carry a 741-741 crisis card, ask friends when they seem a bit off, 'Are you okay?'" And maybe, and make a pledge to share your experience around suicide. A simple conversation might save a life. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, that comes the end of our ceremonial items. We have an item of carryover business, which is item 10 on our Agenda Community Development Block Grant 2016. Mr. Young.
Okay, at the last council meeting, you carried over this item, at which time it had been recommended to rescind the RHS's funding through our 2016 Community Development Block Grant, and gave them two weeks for us to meet and hopefully resolve some of the issues. We met on August 11th, asked for some documents we have yet to receive, received those documents, haven't received them as of yet. The issue of whether to reallocate this sixteen block grant money, as I've said in my staff report, seems somewhat complex, but I don't really think it is. The complexity comes from the fact that RHS has been a very positive force in the community for a number of years, has operated a couple of very good programs, programs that the city has funded previously, notably Harrington House and Food Bank. But they've had some problems lately, some very serious problems. And if this wasn't RHS, if we had an entity that had a sexual harassment issue that was settled for $152,000, they have a second claim that is open, they have had an audit that has not been passed, they've had some real questionable record-keeping, we've had a very difficult time in getting information to make up the annual reports, and to keep, to track and to monitor them as a sub-recipient, there would be no hesitation that they shouldn't be funded. Now, we're responsible under CDBG, the acronym doesn't roll off my tongue quite so easily, to hold our sub-receipients to the same regulations they hold us to, and we're required to do the monitoring. To get into some of the issues slightly, or more specifically, the sexual harassment one, we've asked for repeatedly information concerning the one that was settled, and repeatedly we have not leaned into the documents and claimed that the personnel matters, they can't provide them. That may or may not be the case. I think there are cases where there may be an overriding interest that would override the personnel issue, but we've never been received any proof, we've not received the Correction Act and Plan, or any of the documents from the Department of Fair Employment and Housing that we've asked for. And in discussions and reviewing the documents we have, there seems to be rather cavalier attitude towards the whole issue of sexual harassment. And frankly, I and I think the staff frankly doubt that they even get it. All things considered, and considering all the information we reviewed, we think it is much, much more likely that the instances occurred, and they were not handled appropriately, and that was a clear violation of the regulations that they had agreed to in signing their contract with the city, and the ones to which we are held also responsible through the state and to the federal government. I think the settlement highlights that. If the settlement wasn't necessary, or if nothing had happened, the settlement wouldn't have been necessary. If suddenly they were to show up with these documents, you know, suddenly produce them, I'd have to ask, you know, "Why did they make the settlement? And why has it taken three months to produce the documents that we've asked for?" And it's probably one of the biggest issues. But following that, there's now a sexual harassment claim that has been made, sexual harassment claim. Before the Department of Fair Employment and Housing, it's still an open one, and when we discussed with State Housing and Community Development, that particular thing, they have advised us that we should not enter into contract with anybody that has open claims, ones that might eventually lead to further litigation. That doesn't mean that RHS couldn't do this over the next year or two years, basically clean up their house, but it needs to be done. As it stands now, that is something that the state will look at. In fact, as I'll get to later, I suspect the state will probably be auditing us in the near future. That audit, they look at us, they also look at our sub-receipients. The question was asked at the last meeting, I believe it was Councilman Fulman, makes no difference, one of the council members, asked why this issue hadn't come up sooner. We make quarterly audits. The quarterly, and I think I was mistaken when I stated that the last audit was a quarterly. The quarterly audits are primarily a financial in nature, to see that the money's been spent properly. They had proper record keeping, purchase orders, receipts, and the like. But the annual audit does that, and then also goes through a sixteen-page checklist of the various requirements under the state and federal guidelines that are required to be adhered to. And that is when it began. And part of it, for that began, what started this whole ball rolling, was that one of the questions asked was if there's any lawsuits or claims that have been filed against them, and they said, "No." And a couple weeks later, out comes the report in the newspaper, and lo and behold, that the lawsuit had been filed or settled several weeks, maybe a month, prior to us asking that question. That opened up the first door to start looking into whether or not there had been other claims. And frankly, as we, that would then open up the look in much more detail, because audits generally are taken on a sampling basis, you sample to look for compliance, and if you find the things that are in order, you know, you accept that everything's in order. And once you find an irregularity, you start to focus your audit towards the more detail in those areas where there's irregularities. And frankly, the further we go, the more we find. I think I can say safely that frankly, every time we've received documents or conversations, there's been a new door opened that needs to be looked at, some of which I haven't even included in my report. The record-keeping has been, I'm not sure how to describe it. Maybe somebody that's looking at it can, but I know that our staff accountant has been probably twenty-five percent of the time over the last few months trying to go through, asking for repeatedly for information to clarify information that's been sent, or finding that information just does not jive or make sense with the information previously submitted. Just a matter of how much of that. We have given a list of some of the times and meetings that we've met, and information requested is attached to the report. But the triplicate asked under the public records request for documents, and nearly six hundred pages of emails have gone back and forth over the last couple months, just trying to get information. One of the examples, for example, was a trying to look at revenue sources, it's taken five times, and the differences each time are not a matter of a few hundred dollars, but tens of thousands of dollars difference in the revenue report of other sources. And this is an important part of the program, of knowing how the whole program is funded, not only what a CDBG provides, but what other sources are providing. And then those conflict with each other. I think we've maybe finally gotten to it. Another matter, just an example, just to give a few, is a matter of self-certification concern that was brought up over a year ago. Now, this present audit, but the annual audit previously, this time it was still, hadn't been addressed. They indicated that just before our meeting on the 11th, that they had finally taken care of it, and after reviewing it, we found that there were duplication of records and missing records, and some were incorrect. Again, this just consumes a huge amount of city staff time in trying to monitor the Frankly, this all comes down to, you know, we have to wonder anytime, any information we get, if it's correct or not, because so much of it has been incorrect, or has had to be done over and over before we finally reach a point that we think that it is accurate. If there's any question about whether the city staff knows what they're doing, our consultant pointed out that when was the last time the state audited our records under this program, they said it was the best they had ever worked with, and it was the best audit that they had ever performed. And this is on a statewide basis. So staff has done a good job, and has been recognized by the Department of Housing and Community Development. As to the risk, the future risk of our funds, a statement was made at the last council meeting, and has been made a number of times, that they didn't think it was likely that the state would withhold our funds or would jeopardize our program. And of course, my comment is, I'm not real comfortable with the idea of it probably not likely, particularly from somebody that doesn't seem to understand the program. When we asked specifically in our phone conversation with Housing and Community Development about these issues, specifically with RHS, the sexual harassment, the reporting issues, they said, "Well, it's up to you to do what is reasonable and responsible." So we shifted the question and said, "Well, what happens if this was us?" And they said they would consider it absolutely too risky to even contract any funds with us if those kinds of things were happening. And I think that makes it very clear in my mind that our block grant funds would be in jeopardy, and I think they have all but said so. The state's aware of this, they follow the newspaper, we've had conversations with them, and so I'm, as a result, I'm expecting that we will have an audit, and they will be expecting that we have done what they see as the right thing. Overall, I think the staff members, you can check with any of them, myself included, have just felt, well, the question was asked, it was a deception, and I think, like I said, I was careful in what I said last time, and I won't be quite so careful this time. I think there is. I think they withheld information, I think they only give us what we virtually pry out of them, and I do not feel comfortable with most of what we get. And while some of the information may be accurate, I don't know which portions of those are. All total, I just feel really uncomfortable that we're getting reliable information from them, either by omission or commission. Some may be lack of knowledge, and that is also possibly damaging to the city when people talk about how certain programs are implied, that certain programs somehow are not going to be impacted by the loss of block grant monies, such as the Food Bank programs in the dispensaries in the county, or Santa's Workshop, or things like that. Because that makes others believe that this money's being used for that, which is clearly contrary to the contract agreement with the state. The money's supposed to be used for the primary benefit of the city residents. That's their rule, not our rule, and that is something that could jeopardize our funds, and we have to try to explain that to the state. I've attached a timeline, as I mentioned earlier. I've also attached a list of some of the documents we've requested, we have yet to receive. In terms of time, I've looked at it in the last two weeks, I spent practically a third of my time on this matter alone, which I think I probably could have better spent somewhere else. The irony behind all this thing is that frankly, if all of this stuff had been brought out early, if it had happened, there's a good chance we could have worked with them, we could have had appropriate actions taken, and some of these issues wouldn't be where they are today. I know there's a concern that not funding them may jeopardize the RHS Food Bank, something I would question, considering that our funds only represent about fifteen percent of their total, or that it might impact operations of Harrington House, and I think that's a shame. But that's what happens when apparently the administration or management of RHS has done some of the things that they have done. Fortunately, some of the recommendations under the seventeen program hopefully will provide for another means of a food bank, and another means of providing a domestic violence shelter. I might close with a couple things, and saying that the burden really is on the sub-receipients to demonstrate their compliance. It's not up to us to have to go around and show that compliance, or to show that they haven't complied. They have to show compliance. But yet, we've dug out plenty of instances of non-compliance, and have not been satisfied in many areas that they have complied. As a result, and because our consultant, and even without having our consultant make the recommendation that we should not fund them, and also from our discussions from Housing and Community Development, saying that our funds could be jeopardized, would be at risk, as they put it. But those things even strengthen my own personal recommendation, and that is that the 2016 block grant funds be reallocated, and that the next council meeting, September 5th, public hearing be held to determine how they may be reallocated, to what kind of program. I think that's it. Unless you have questions.
All right. Counsel, if you have questions for Mr. Young. Mr. Fulman.
Can you tell us more about what happened at the 8-19 meeting and the 8-17 meeting?
The 8-9?
8-9 meeting, my apologies. The 8-9 meeting and the 8-11 meeting.
They don't, I didn't hear the first one.
The 8-9 was you, Bridget Lacy, and Lori Adams discussing outstanding audit issues with state representatives.
Okay. Oh, with the state, that one was basically a phone conversation, and I think I had pretty much said what they said. We discussed what was happening, we asked how we should proceed with that, what they expected of us, and their moment of bureaucratic courage, they said, "Well, you guys need to do what's best and right, do the appropriate action." That's why we went to the second question, what if that was us that had these situations? And they said, "Well..." We finally came around and said, "We would consider it too risky to fund you." At the 8-11 meeting, we met at RHS, and went over some of the information that we'd like. We were said that we'd be told, I asked to have it by last Tuesday if possible, because we'd have a staff report to put together. But I said, "If I could get it by Wednesday morning, we'd be able to do it." And we haven't gotten it, we haven't gotten it to date. So in that discussion, we went, a number of things, talked over some of the points that we had gone over before, and, yeah, gone over some of the points from before.
My turn. Just going through the staff report here. Mr. Young, let me see here. Page two, you talk about...
Page two, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I lost it. Has the city council been provided the documents that are talked about in the first paragraph? Or the city, I should say, not the city council?
First paragraph?
It says, "City staff has requested multiple documents that could support our RHS's claims, including the Corrective Action Plan, and corresponds between RHS and the Department of Fair Employment and Housing, none of which have yet provided, have been provided..." provided citing employee privacy concerns." Has, has any of those been resolved? That's those 10 bullet points that are also in the, attached to the staff report?
Yes. Those are the, those are the documents. At the very end of the staff report, we'd asked for a copy of the initial letter from DFEH, which is Department of Fair Employment and Housing, for both claims, the one settled and one that's open, and additional correspondence. At the last meeting, one of the RHS board members claimed that had in his hand, or at least represented, he had in his hand five pages of actions, take, notes taken by the former board president, so forth, the timeline when the former executive director was taken off administrative leave, summary of the results of the investigation, a copy of the settlement agreement, copy of the corrective action, action plan, proof or evidence that the corrective action plan had been implemented, copy of email from, of one person to another on the executive director, written statements from the board saying no other complaints or claims had been come to their attention, and the most recent claim. Those are things we've asked for. Some of them we have asked for probably back since May, to be my guess, definitely in June, and have yet to receive, receive them.
So.
And those, if we received them, I may make clear, if we received all those, that wouldn't necessarily resolve the matter. That would provide us with information as to whether the, the matter could be resolved. Again, it may, we don't know what they contain. It may just substantiate our own beliefs from the other information we've gathered that the matter was not handled appropriately. And, but it might show it has been too. We just don't know. We haven't seen it. That would not in of itself resolve the matter. We would just have some additional information to look at.
So, possibly giving them the benefit of the doubt, they would have submitted it to their attorney. And at that point in time, their attorney probably are, possibly could have advised them not to move forward with submitting it?
Yeah.
Is that a safe assumption?
Yeah.
And I guess where I'm, where I'm going with this is that if the city and CDBG requires a certain bit of information and RHS is legally barred from giving that, giving that information to us, then I guess we're, we're kind of in a quandary here and.
I can comment on that, Councilmember.
Don't have any other choice. Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
Yes, I spoke to RHS's legal counsel late last week. His concern was anything that could be considered a personnel matter, not releasing those records. In my opinion, you know, there's no law that says you cannot release these or you have to release these. What the, what the law is basically California Constitution First Amendment right to privacy. It's called informational privacy, and that's what personal records in the private sector basically are. So, if somebody was to wrongfully release those or release those, you know, for no good reason, then you have a potential claim for invasion of privacy. There are cases that talk about when you, when it's not an invasion of privacy and when it may be a, an okay time to open up those types of records. It's a balancing test between the individual's interest in privacy and the, basically in this case, the city's interest in seeing those records. And that scenario can also be mitigated by something like a confidentiality agreement, something that we enter into and say, "We're only going to review these records for these purposes. They will not be submitted elsewhere. They will not be considered public records, et cetera." So, I briefly spoke about this late last week with RHS's legal counsel. The ultimate offer that I received was that myself or my law partner could view the corrective action plan in private with Mr. Feller present and report back to the council what that So, that, that's not, you know, really going to get us the information that we need. The RHS board really does have, you know, they, they have to weigh the pros and cons of, of releasing information. Anytime you release information, yes, you can get sued, and it happens all the time. But I think in this case, there's a really good defense, especially if we had a, an agreement in place. But, you know, that's not to be taken lightly. Even lawsuits that you win can be very expensive. We all know that. And like Mr. Young said, we don't know what the contents of those records would tell the city, but there remain significant other issues. So, you know, that may also weigh into their decision. You know, why, why open yourself up to some potential lawsuit if it's not going to get you there anyway? I don't know. But it's, it's not an, an easy answer as just a yes or no, you can, you can't.
The, the meeting with the corrective action plan seems confusing to me. The whole essence of a corrective action plan is how you're going to move forward. So, why would Mr. Feller even have to be there?
Um, just because it would.
I don't know.
I think it was, I think that was a personal corrective action plan for him that they were referring to that would have been implemented back when he was still employed. Not necessarily a corrective action plan for the agency.
Maybe I've been misunderstanding that this whole time. Thank you.
Councilmember Cahn.
I can understand them not wanting to violate any of their employees' privacy. Have they been able to contact these employees to gain a release?
I believe they've attempted to. Neither employee's willing to just sign a blanket release, which of course, even if they were willing, you know, I don't know what's in their minds, but there's something different between a release that would put it out in the public realm, you know, 100% it, it goes to the newspaper kind of release versus something that can be held in confidence and reviewed by a limited number of people. They were asked to sign sort of a blanket release. I believe they were, I don't know that Mr. Feller has an attorney, but I believe the other employee was basically advised not to sign it by her attorney.
And there's still an open case as well? And if they'd been in contact with that employee?
I don't have any information on that case, maybe.
I don't either.
I'm not sure who that, if.
And the $152,000 that was paid out, was that a decision by the RHS board?
Well, that's, it's a settlement agreement. Usually what happens if you, just generally speaking, I don't have personal knowledge of their case, but if you have insurance involved, what happens is the insurance company says, "We want to settle for this much." And you agree with it because they're paying. Generally, if you want to decline that, then you have to proceed without the insurance covering whether it's attorney's fees or, you know, whatever your ultimate judgment ends up being at the end of the day.
I think a couple of points, one of the points I didn't mention, last Friday, of course, we had a review of the upcoming 17 program. And one of the factors that amounted to a fairly significant number of points is grantee's performance, you know. We have been in the program for a number of years. And they would look back at our performance, and this is, I believe, where Housing and Community Development would be looking as to whether or not we have complied with the regulations. And if we have complied, they look also through us to our sub-sub receipients and whether we've acted appropriately, whether there have been violations. But putting aside even the, the claim that has been settled, there still is an outstanding claim that has not been settled. And there are the reporting and accounting issues that in and of themselves are good reason to, I believe, a good reason to terminate the agreement with RHS. So, I wouldn't focus entirely on the, the one central harassment. I think it's just one link in that chain.
Anything else? No. Mr. Young, is there anything else that staff wants to add other than yourself or?
I don't.
Okay. All right. Well, we, I'm, I know that there are a number here who would like to weigh in on this, so council will be able to come back for more deliberations. Let's go ahead and open up public comment. Remember to try to limit your comments to three minutes, and we will hear what the public has to say. Who would like to be first? Thank you. Could you please make note on the record that Councilman Greeno has joined us at 7:00? Thank you. It's good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
Glad you're able to join us.
I apologize for my tardiness. I had an urgent family matter to attend to.
But thank you.
All right. My name is Celia Perez. I am the RHS Board Chair. I, three minutes is going to be a very short time for me. I'm used to talking for three hours. So, I do want to acknowledge the good work that Linda and Bridget have done with RHS. They've been very, at least to me, very kind and understanding, compassionate and knowledgeable. They were extremely knowledgeable individuals. I do want to make the clarification that a lot of the issues that Mr. Young has mentioned have to do with the food bank, not Harrington House. There, no doubt, there are accounting errors on the food bank. There are some oversight that is lacking that is much needed. That's something I like to, I specialize in my daytime job. That I, with the help of, hopefully, with the consulting, we could better run our figures and data collection is what I'm trying to say. The, so I want to make that clarification. There's, when he's speaking of all these errors and charting errors, he's referring to the food bank. The other thing that Ms. Rice did mention is our attorney, George, does have all the documents. I have submitted all those documents. It is, it's a decision I'm not really comfortable making. Do I take the risk of litigation? I disclose in these personnel matters or do we take the money? I have leaned on to our council. We have two attorneys, Attorney Patrick Deegan assigned to us by our insurance on an open claim. And we're not to release any of those records. That open claim, that attorney has declined to have those records released on behalf of her, of his client. As far as, George has all the documents. He, unfortunately, he's on travel and he is hard to get a hold of. He did, I thought he'd be back on Tuesday, and he wasn't back until Wednesday, and then he contacted Ms. Rice on Thursday. We're not trying to hide anything. It's not, Mr. Young mentions in his summary that we are aloof, that we are secretive. It's been a challenge because I'm a pretty open person and I want to disclose things, but I can't disclose that information. I'm trying to work with him and give him as much as we can allow to give. And that's the best that I can do without breaking confidentiality or privacy. And we were hopeful that we would come to an agreement where we would share those documents with somebody, but that not be released to the public so that the employees' privacies are protected and we're not in litigation. So, I was hopeful that that would be resolved last week. And I don't know where our attorney's not here. Unfortunately, he was going to be here tonight, but he's not here. As far as transparency, it goes back to my statement that I have tried to be as transparent as possible. And it is true, the more we do talk, the more little questions, not little questions, but more questions do come up. But it's interesting because we're trying to figure out what is it that you need to show that we were complying, we did the best for the situation? Then we hear, I read this and hear that you have a credible source. Who is this credible source? Do they have the documents that you want? Do they have facts? Were they in the room? Are these our employees? Or, we're not being transparent either. So, is it you wanting us to prove that we did do the right thing? Or you want us to prove, or you're looking to prove that we didn't do the right thing and that we're lying and that we're not credible people? So, that's misleading, I suppose, in our meetings. We're trying to meet and work with you, give you what we can give you without violating anybody's privacies. That's, sorry. And whatever decision you make, I'll be fine with it. I'll support it. We all need to work together regardless. This is our consumers that we're talking about. These are the people that are cold and homeless tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Michael Reese. Been a member of the RHS Harrington House community, on and off from the board for two decades. And when I heard the presentation, I had a chance to scan the report to you. It leads the reader to believe that there's an adversarial relationship between the city staff and the RHS. Nothing more to the contrary can be true. I heard the premise that this ball got rolling from the settlement, and there must have been something to it because it was settled. I can tell you from a legal standpoint, it's us and our cases that settle. Ms. Rice was very informative and took an accurate point when she said, "In these matters, especially when you're a private nonprofit and you are relying, reliance upon your insurance carrier to make decisions that are in their financial best interest." The board did not have a veto decision here, nor were we allowed to carry out a lawsuit that, I think, had we gone to trial and all the facts came out, a different result would have been obvious to the fact finder. We didn't have that opportunity. I can tell you from a board member at that point in time, we were told by an insurance company, "It is cheaper to settle than to prevail." This is the offer, and we got it down to next dollars. So, starting from the premise that there must have been something to it, and it got us to this point, I think is a red herring. It's, it's not a premise that we should start off from. I've heard some questions from the council members about, well, is it that RHS is cooperating with you or have these documents? Saying, "No, are they being guided now because there's another pending case?" But council, what we can give to you is an honest disagreement between our attorney and your attorney and how to fashion the release of these documents. The corrective action plan that we spoke of, Mr. Sharp, was a personal corrective action plan for the executive director, who, to my surprise, said he wouldn't be adverse to being in the room and having it released, but not for public dissemination, as opposed to, "Hell, no, I'm not going to release it." And RHS can't just make the blanket decision to release his personal corrective action plan without being sued. I can't ask for corrective action plan for your employees, like you all were well aware of that. There is no public policy here that outweighs that personal privacy of Mr. Feller or the litigants in this case. And we're also now being sort of bootstrapped by the litigant in the current case, who won't agree to release the confidentiality. I can tell you personally, as a board member, I hope that case goes to trial, because the litigant will not. But we are now being asked to turn over documents or to cooperate, and then when we can't, it's being held against us. It's not being held against us for any lack of desire of operation. RHS and its board members and its attorneys are having to make legal decisions on what we can do without being sued and what we can do to protect and prevail in the litigation that may arise or may be coming up. As a board, we learned of this last complaint in one of our board meetings. We were told there's a new complaint. Then we were told, "We're not going to tell you what it is." And then weeks later, it got ferreted out. So in the course of trying to resolve this fairness of our employees and to make sure that, especially to the people who receive service from Harrington House, continue, we have to balance some things here, still try to work with the city and the staff and still try to protect RHS Harrington House from being sued later and financially being closed down. So it's, there's no hide the ball. There's no aloofness. Ms. Perez does not have the unilateral ability to make the decisions that she's being called upon to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jalonda Ingram Obi and I'm the program manager at the Harrington House. And I just thought I'd better touch upon a quick few little points here that in response to Mr. Young's analysis and memo. So I believe that we have been going to great efforts to do the house cleaning that he refers to in his memo. We're doing everything we can to make sure that we're, you know, up to date on our sexual harassment policies and enforcing those policies. I believe that Harrington House has had a pristine record on keeping financial records and records of clients and keeping all of the data necessary that's required by CDBG. So I don't think we've ever had a problem in that. I know that what he's been referring to in his memo or some problems that the food bank had, and I think that maybe Ron ought to be left to address those issues. I apologize for what might seem as inappropriate or cavalier attitude on any of our parts. And I'm sorry for anything that I may have said or did to offend anyone. And I never, ever meant to at any point in time. So I too want to work together, as we all resolved at the last meeting, that we were partners in this. And so we really want to move forward and just clean our act up and get it together and follow the rules as according to the CDBG requires and the city. I feel like we got dinged wrongfully for not spending the money fast enough initially. That was one of the first findings that was found by the city against us. And I believe that we corrected that right away as soon as we realized we weren't spending it fast enough. We were very frugal in what we do spend. I know that we're very, very frugal. Our fiscal department is very stringent and has very stringent requirements on how we can spend that money and that we make sure even if it's $5, we're getting three bids for it. I know that we serve around 33 people per month and we serve all victims, including human trafficking victims and sexual assault victims, stalking victims, dating violence victims and domestic violence victims. And so we never turn anybody away either that's been a victim of one of those crimes. And I think it was alluded to that we have too many rules. We have since, since I took over management, we have instituted a policy of no rules. And it is now, they sign what's called rights and responsibilities. So as they come into the shelter, they are informed and sign off on this that we're not enforcing any rules here. We're not going to lay any rules on you that aren't something that everybody, we all have to get along. It's communal living. And so really what it is, it's safety stuff. And it's, and they agree to this when they come in. So I don't think that we have any really strict rules that we're throwing people out on the street over. I don't think that's happening. And so I am concerned that if you were to take this funding and give it to Rape Crisis, which is excellent, excellent program, but they're only proposing to serve a small fraction of what we do serve. And then what they would be sheltering, it would be a voucher in a motel. And we offer educational classes and round-the-clock staff, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to assist these victims of human trafficking or whatever they're a victim of. And so there's always somebody there to help them, counsel them, and then they go through the classes. So I think we offer, we have more to offer at the Harrington House than what would be offered in a motel setting. On page four of your memo, there was a paragraph there that talked about some hearsay from some unknown but credible source that's saying that we're lying, that the rural human services is not credible. And I feel like that would be kind of like fighting a phantom, like a ghost that doesn't exist. It's really difficult to win a fight when you don't know what it is that you're fighting against. And I don't want to fight that battle, honestly. I want to be credible and I want to regain the trust and the credibility of the community and the city. Ron and I do, we both understand the CDBG guidelines and I believe that we serve over 90% of our clients live right within the city limits. And so I don't think that there's any question at all about who we're serving. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Ron Phillips, RHS. I run the food bank program, among other things. I want to address just two items. One goes and was in the paper and then Mr. Young reported it tonight. Says when RHS attempted to correct its client's self-certification last week, 20% of the records in the cities, that the city sampled, were missing. Now, what they did is we have 2,500, over 2,500 names that we have taken applications on. So they gave me 10 names they wanted to see, 10 applications. This was at roughly 12:20. Our meeting started at 11:00. While I was in trying to find the 10 applications, they were out in the hallway talking. And so I wanted to try and hurry up and get through. I found eight of them very easy. Two of them I knew had to be there, but I didn't take the time to go individually. There are 98 applications in the W file. One of the persons that they wanted to see was, started with W. There was 162 applications in the C file and the other one. So I didn't take the time. I might have been there an hour going through 98 and 162, just to find two names. I did show them to Linda tonight when we came in that we do have them. And they were in the file, just misplaced in the alphabetical order of that section. The second, I don't quite understand. It says 23% of the clients reported were duplicates. This file that the CDBG requires you to fill out does not allow you to alphabetize. I think this goes back to, back in, that we got audited in CDBG 12, where at the time that CDBG had not started their own applications or monitoring system. And we were required to put all of the data. That lasted about a month or two and then the new form came out. And so I think what happened on that was that we transferred some of those names over and put them in once and then they were transferred over for duplication. I think, okay? I do have a letter from Emily Boyd, who was the finance director at the time. And it just basically states that they knew, they understood that a number of people have the last name and some even have the first name. And so that they had asked us to then either identify some other way, either through a number or through a, some junior or senior or whatever, some way to identify that. So I think we corrected that. Those are the only two items that I will even attempt to because I would lose my temper.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I'm sorry. Any other public comment?
Good evening, council and Mary Enscore. My name is Melody Fugate. I'm the executive director of the Delnart Childcare Council. And literally, as I was walking out of my office coming over here tonight, I got a phone call from my daughter and she is in labor with another grandchild, which really solidifies why I'm here tonight. And that is for the children of our community. So right now in Delnart County, there are many agencies and system leaders and parents and organizations that are coming together for a common goal of our children in the community. And that is that all children are going to be reading by the time they reach third grade, third grade level. Our goal is three read by 2023. We know that kindergarten, children that enter into kindergarten, they're learning to read from kindergarten to third grade. But from third grade on, they're learning by reading. They're, excuse me, I said that wrong. I'm a little nervous because I have a grandbaby on the way. I apologize. So our children are learning to read into kindergarten through to the third grade. But from third grade on, if they're not reading, they're not learning. They have to be able to read, to learn. That's so important. Each year, children that enter into kindergarten are ill-prepared for school. Local studies show, and these are our own Delnart County local studies, that 50% of children that enter into kindergarten in Delnart County Unified School District are not prepared for school. There's a vast variety of things that children are lacking in, and literacy is one of them. I'm here on behalf of family childcare providers tonight. Did you know that 20% of children that enter into kindergarten come from a family childcare setting? They have an important job to do. And all the family childcare providers offer a loving, nurturing, safe environment. Some of those family childcare providers lack the skills and the tools that they need to help children prepare for school. Their schedules are tough. They work evenings. They work long hours with very little pay. And they don't all have time or the energy for higher education. We need to help our family childcare providers by offering them the tools to help children prepare for school. The Delnart Childcare Council is dedicated to changing the outcomes for children who enter into kindergarten by offering educational opportunities for our family childcare providers. One of those programs is a school readiness curriculum with a focus on literacy. It's called We Read. The program was designed by local educators right here in our community for family childcare providers right here in our community. This program will give family childcare providers the tools that they need to change the outcomes for our children. It will offer every child a literacy enrichment opportunity. I'm here tonight to ask you to support the literacy initiative and our project proposal submitted for CDBG funds by the Delnart Childcare Council and help us to reach our goal that all children will be reading by 2023. Thank you.
And congratulations.
Yes?
Hi, Linda Center from the county. So this is what I've been hearing about this hot mess we have with RHS. Okay, first I hear there's been no plan of action or corrective action on behalf of the RHS to show and demonstrate to you folks that there's been a sexual harassment plan initiated. But at the same time, I hear Ms. Obi say that the Harrington House has initiated their sexual harassment plan. So it's kind of a, there's not a clear understanding of what's going on with the sexual harassment issue. And I would think that corrective action, since Mr. Feller is no longer a part of the issue, that would be considered corrective, in my opinion, because he, I don't know if he was resigned or if he got fired, one of the two. So he's no longer a threat. The other thing is, is that, you know, this, this is not a personal thing. So I don't like it when people come up here and manipulate you by saying, you know, there's going to be hungry children. Well, yes, there's going to be hungry children, but this was only 15% of the total amount that they are getting for the food bank. Okay? And I think there's some real issues with your audits going on in there. Nobody knows what's really going on. And the board members, they just need to get trained. I don't care how. I think they need to develop a better relationship with our city manager here so that they, there's no question of what's needed. And that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Going once, twice? Okay. We're clear. I'm not opening up public comment again once it comes back to the council because we've been through this multiple times. So I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to feel free to say what you would like to say. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. I will make, and I'm sorry that Mr. Reese left, but I will make one comment in response to his comments. That concerns me and I think speaks to what staff was speaking about from an attitude standpoint. When you have a board member and an attorney who says, I hope it does go, the open case does go to trial because there's no way it will prevail, that is part of, I think, the attitudinal issue that concerns staff. Because what that says is, is this person is just saying stuff. I just, and again, I'm sorry because I wanted to share that with him. That concerns me that when we start making statements, I hope it does go to trial. Even, even if the belief is on the part of the board that maybe there's not merit to this, or maybe it's not something that has been, is not as bad as maybe we might think it is, or that the person is even fabricating it, or the person is even trying to do it to generate money for themselves, even if that's what they were, you feel. The idea of saying that in a public meeting like this sends a wrong message to me. It just sends a very wrong message to me. And I'm sorry that that message. I hope that's not what he meant. I really do. But it is what he said. And everybody heard him say it. I hope it goes to trial. I don't know why anybody would hope that. I would hope that we would resolve these things without going to trial, but that just struck me as odd. All right, council. Mr. Greenow, you were not here when we began our discussions. I know you've read the staff report and would give you opportunity to comment or ask any questions that you might have based on the staff report or on the public comment that you have heard tonight.
I do have one question to Mr. Young. Did we reach out to CDBG, our representative there, and ask them about whether there would be a situation where if RHS were responding to us and putting corrective action into action, if that would make a difference whether we would be putting our funds in jeopardy? Did we have that hypothetical conversation with them? Whether that would make a difference? If that makes sense?
No, we did not have that exact conversation. But we did have, we did ask, as I said earlier, that they said they expected us to act reasonably appropriately, whatever that was supposed to mean, you know? And then when we put it in the context of we were the ones, they said it would be too risky. But in discussion with our consultant, I believe, and I- But in discussion with our consultant, I believe, and I don't recall if this was while we talked to the state or not, people can be ineligible for funds for some time period and clean their house up. I think that was a term they did use, you know? And can be later considered eligible for funds or would not be at as, at as much risk, I should put it, because the, part of the evaluation of the future programs is not only the worthiness of the program or the projects that you're presenting and the cost and the like, is also past performance. And past performance can be diluted by more good performance as it, as it moves along.
Okay. Thank you.
That was spoken to in the workshop that we just went to on Friday, talking about the scoring criteria, the capacity to perform the activity and past performance is rated almost a full fifth of the point value, 200 points out of a total of 950 maximum points. So in a relatively small range of points in that point structure, if we were to get dinged by a past performance issue, it really could knock us out of the running.
If you recall though, you're right, it's the $200 and 950, but also a good portion of the points are set by essentially community factors such as the percentage of low and moderate income and so forth. So the 200 actually has a bigger influence on the points that we have some control over. Because there's a, let's see, what was it? I don't know if it, which ones were they? Maybe Linda can help me out on that. But there were some that, I can't seem to find it right though, but there were some that are set because we have, I think she said 63.5% low and moderate income. And that's a number we can't change, you know? So the variable ones that we can change would be the, our performance, you know, and then of course, the project and, and how well we're meeting the needs or one of the national objectives on whatever the projects and programs we're then, then presenting.
Okay.
I, I just, I just want to say that I really feel like we're in a quandary here because it's inconceivable to me that we have the members that are on the RHS board that, that we all know personally and have worked with and, and then we have professional consultants that are telling us that our future with CDBG, is that right?
Got it.
Is at risk. And, and for that, you know, I, I'm conflicted. And so, hot mess indeed, et cetera. But I just, I, I want to, I want to just say that this is risk analysis for me.
Yeah. Anything else, Mr. Follman?
Well, yeah, I echo a lot of the sentiments that Council has said here tonight. You know, at this time, at this hearing, regardless of what is in any other documents that may or may not prove anything else, the information that we have here and now is showing us that the city is at a big risk of losing at least one-fifth of the points that we could receive with the state's next round of CDBG scoring. That's big to me. That's, you know, 20% of the points out the window. It's 200 points just gone. Then that's up to $5 million of funding for the city for next year that we could lose out on entirely, that we already don't know how competitive we are with the rest of that. So we really do just have to cover our bases here. And it's terrible. It's unfortunate. And those are just cursory words that we could be using here. But it's just awful that this is happening. And I really do feel for Real Human Services, like I said at the last meeting, people that go to Real Human Services are people that I share stories with. There's services that I wish wouldn't be affected by this debate tonight, but unfortunately may be. So I really don't have much else to add that I didn't say at the last meeting or hasn't been said tonight.
I would like to just chime in and say that the, the staff report, I don't want to make the mistake of people taking the staff report for this, the opinion of the council. I would like to thank Mr. Young for giving us his opinion candidly. I do appreciate that, the not pulling his punches, so to speak. It's a difficult situation because as Mr. Kime said, we know these people. I'm very familiar with people on the board of RHS. Do I believe that they acted deceptively? I'm, I'm not willing to accept that. I don't believe that for a minute. In a situation such as a sexual harassment type situation, it's, it's very uncomfortable. Often the victim just wants the behavior to stop. And many times they are willing to continue working with the offending person if the behavior stops. Often the management people will make the mistake of possibly dismissing the behavior because they know this person. They don't believe that this person would, would do this or that. And it gets drawn out and then it goes bad. So in the, in the staff report where it says that there was possibly some deception, that's an opinion. I'm, I'm fine with, with Mr. Young giving his opinion in that respect. I just want to say that I appreciate the, the efforts that these people put out in our community to help our community members. And now that we're here in this very uncomfortable spot, I understand that we're in a place where we're being advised that one thing has to happen. And RHS is in the position where legally they can't provide this information that we need. So here we are, having to act on that very difficult set of circumstances. So I just wanted to be clear that the adversarial relationship certainly doesn't ring, ring with me. Mr. Reese said it seemed like the lack of providing documents seems like it was being held against them. That's, that's not my opinion. I completely understand that you have to go through your council before you can just submit documentation to, about a personnel issue. So please don't make that mistake that I share that, that adversarial opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Green, anything else?
I just want to echo Councilman Short's opinion about RHS about not being adversarial. I don't believe that we're adversarial towards you guys and I don't believe that you're adversarial towards us. But we do find ourselves in this difficult situation and unfortunately there are risks that I don't think we can take with this money. That's it.
I think that, I think that all of us realize of the, of the magnitude of this issue, it's not lost on any of us. And as Ms. Perez pointed out, sometimes you're stuck with, how do you make this decision? Do you, do you do this and open yourself up for other litigation? Or do you not do it and then realize that you have to face the consequences of that action? And the reality is, is what the RHS board is facing is the exact same quandary that the city council is facing. And it's not easy. And I, we, we understand that. I would hope that if there's anybody at RHS that thinks that the city council takes this lightly or that we somehow are trying to punish RHS, that somebody would correct that because I think that RHS should know us better than that. That said, we still are faced with that same quandary that you guys are faced with. The difference is, is that, that RHS in this component answers to itself and answers to us about this money, but we as the council have to answer to the entire city, not only for previous grants, but for future grants, which is, it's not easy. And it's not something any of us take lightly by any means because the reality is, is whatever decision we make comes with risk. And if we take a decision that does not favor RHS, we realize that part of that risk is public perception that we will get in this community. And that's, that's hard. I don't think that there's anybody up here that wants to be cast in a disparaging light as if we somehow don't care about this community. I think everybody that's on this council is here because they in fact do care about this community and accept the responsibility of managing all the resources that are at our discretion. And that's part of what we're trying to do here. So that's not easy. And I, I feel for RHS. I truly do. But I will echo one thing that I said two weeks ago. And that is this, as uncomfortable as it may be, this is not a problem that started with the city, but it is a problem the city has to manage. And so that's part of where I have to draw my line, is that, that it didn't start here. But ultimately it has to end here. We have to make a decision. And it's not easy. Okay, so we are back to the council with the question at hand given to you in the staff report is whether or not we are going to continue with the allocation of the 2016 CBDG grant funds to Harrington House and the RHS Food Bank, or if we're going to rescind those funds and schedule a public hearing on September 5th, 2017 to consider possible alternative proposals.
One or the other?
Well, if we, if we, if we don't take any action at all, the, the action that we've already taken will stand. Is that correct, Council? I mean, unless we choose to rescind the, the 2016 grant, it will continue. Would that be correct?
Would that be correct? If you took no action, I would suggest providing direction just for clarification for staff's purposes.
Okay. So if, if in fact we choose to rescind it, if that's the choice, then I think it would be appropriate. We don't, we don't want to just forego that, that allocation of 316 some odd thousand dollars. So I think that it would be appropriate to consider alternative proposals for those grant funds. That's why there's two parts to this.
Thank you. Nobody wants to go first?
No.
I move we rescind the council's previous selection of RHS activities for the 2016 Community Development Blanc Grant, CDBG program, Harrington House and the RHS Food Bank. And schedule a public hearing for September 5th, 2017 to receive input and proposals for possible 2016 CDBG activities.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Please pull a vote.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Kime?
Yes.
Pro Tem Short?
Yes.
Mary Enscore?
Yes. Thank you. The next item is the 2017 application. And so I don't know exactly how, Ms. Lee, are you going to walk us through this? Council's going to, we're going to take five minutes, please. And go ahead, staff can get arranged for that. And we'll reconvene at 7:50.
No, I think Melody wants to get out of here because she's having a grandbaby. She's like, I'm taking, I'm taking my opportunity.
Okay. Get out. Want a cookie? You can bring that up.[1565.13] Want a cookie? You can bring that up.
The presentation from staff, Ms. Lever, if you would start walking us through the
2017 CBDG application and the proposals that we have received. You will be.
There you are. Can you hear me now? Okay. Good evening, mayor and council members. So, we are holding a public hearing tonight to discuss the proposals that we received for the next round of CDBG funding. The Notice of Funding Availability, which is the official release of the CDBG application, it hasn't happened yet, it's expected to be either the very end of August or the beginning of September. So, to prepare for this, city staff conducted two public workshops, one in March and one in July, and staff, our accountant Bridget Lacy, reached out to as many agencies as we could find or think of or Google, to invite as many people as possible to come to these workshops, to learn about CDBG, what kind of funding opportunities there are, to hear about what kinds of projects or programs people were interested in providing, and then invite them to submit proposals to us. We received 12 proposals, which is way more than we ever have before. So, I guess I'm sorry to tell you, this is gonna take a while to walk through them all, but I'm very pleased that we got so much, such a great response from the community. Okay, so, in the staff report in your packet, I sort of tried to briefly outline what we reviewed last Friday at the workshop, just as a reminder or information for anyone who wasn't able to be there, you know, from the public. There are significant changes to CDBG this year compared to last year. The biggest ones that we're concerned with right now is that the maximum grant funding has changed from $2 million total to $5 million total. Also, in addition to that very large increase in funding, they are reducing the number of projects that we can do. So, we can do fewer projects, but for more money. So... Oh, I also wanted to point out to council and to the public, I did bring extra copies of the handouts from last Friday's workshop, if anybody needs one, they're over on the desk over there. I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, I'm just, they're there if you'd like them. Okay, so, under the different categories of CDBG, we have to pick basically two categories, two categories and a planning grant, if we want one. Under the category of public facilities, we did not have any proposals this year. Under housing programs, again, no proposals. Under public improvements, we had one proposal by city staff, so I would like to invite Eric Weir to just briefly explain what that project is.
Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure to be presenting a very lengthy presentation on our, on our infrastructure project, which is very important to this community, so it's very important to go over every detail in extreme length tonight. All right, so no, we will, we'll move through, we'll move through quickly with it. So, as Ms. Lever said, this, this year the CDBG structure's changed a little bit, it's allowed us to kind of expand some of our, our projects. We've been successful in the past with CDBG infrastructure projects. 2012, we completed the Second Street Sewer Improvement Project, and then in 2014, we were successful with the B Street Sewer Improvement Project. So, this year, with the expanded funding, we're able to take a look at a little different project, and one that really sort of definitely meets the requirements of CDBG, as well as is fast needed in the community. So, the proposed project is a storm drain improvement project. This map is a map that shows, you can see Beachfront Park down there in the, in the lower portion of the map. And then in blue, what you see is all the areas that we deal with on an every-year basis, when the big storms roll through Delano County, inevitably, they do come. These are all the areas that flood. They flood intersections, they flood property, brings the fire police, public works crews out, you know, in the middle of the night, in the drive-in rainstorms to block intersections, try to keep the public safe. In fact, we have a storm protocol in which Chief Mensel, myself, public works crews, we meet before the storm, just to get ready, because it's not a matter of if it's gonna come, it's a matter of when it's gonna come. So, there's a map sort of showing the different areas that do flood. And I'll just give you an example. See how fast this loads here? Apparently not fast enough. All right, anyway, it's basically was a video of some of the flooding that we have in some of the residential neighborhoods. A lot of the flooding occurs in the middle of the night, so it's hard to get good photos of it, you can see the sandbags up. This is some apartments that flood. Here's a better shot during some of the storms during the day. These people have my personal cellphone number, and believe me, they're not afraid to use it when the, when the water comes. So, this is some photos that I, that I took during the event. You can see it's just an absolute river that runs through this apartment complex, through the back, the back doors there, through their gates. You can see that's actual white water as it's trying to get through the gate itself. It's about 18 inches, 24 inches high at that point, coming all the way through the apartment complex, flooding out in the street. You can see the street's completely flooded. Again, we have to call out our emergency service personnel, so we tried to pump what we could around, although it's a futile effort when you're trying to pump against mother nature. You see some more of the fire crews out there. They had to actually kick down their gate to try to allow some of the, the water through, flooded the homes. This is some more flooding in the downtown area, you can see it's just boiling out of the storm drain. You can see this, this is in by the old Daleys Building. Cars completely flooded, streets flooded. So, now let's get down to the reason why. So, this is our current storm drain basins, if you look at it. So, we look at storm drains, we talk about basins and when they actually flow into certain areas. So, I've broken the center part of the city down into three basins. You have the C Street Basin, which is in yellow, actually outflows right by the treatment plant. You have what's considered, we consider it a basin, it's the F Street Basin, which takes up the majority of the center of the city and then, and then flows out at Front Street, where it turns a corner. Then you have the K Street Basin, which actually flows out of the K Street Outfall. If you're looking just at outfalls, you have the C Street Basin here, still in yellow, and then this K Street line tries to convey all of this water through the entire center part of the city. So, what's proposed in this storm drain project, and we'll go back to the other map here in a minute, is we're gonna make storm drain improvements in and along Front Street here, down along the outfall, to increase that outfall flow capacity, and then back up the C Street drainage, so we can actually convey that water out before it backs up into the homes and the residents. So, in, in a nutshell, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take that F Street basin, and we're gonna flip it over to the C Street side, and improve those storm drains so it has the capacity to take it. So, again, looking back at this map, you can see in blue here, we call it the base bid. These are the improvements along Front Street, where we're gonna add two new 48-inch pipes is, is the initial idea, bring it down to C Street, where we're gonna join up with the existing 48, and then take it out with the outfall here, at the existing outfall here at C Street. The other portion of the projects to actually make some improvements, back in the areas of Fifth Street, along C Street, working our way down C Street, all the way to, to Front Street, to improve the capacity of the drainage system. What this will essentially do is, we're not gonna do any work down in the commercial area where we have the downtown flooding, what we're doing is we're taking the pressure off it. So, by, by making all of these modifications up in here, we're gonna take the pressure off K Street, and really, the hope is to kill two birds with one stone. The, the quick numbers that, that we ran, Mr. Young, myself, we're looking at trying to size these storm drains so they can take the 10-year event actually in the pipes, and then allow the, the streets themselves to handle the 25-year, so this wouldn't be an every-year type of scenario, we would only have minimal flooding, say every once every 25 years to that, to that type of range. So, we have our, our Beachfront Park master plan, and the significance here is, if we tear up the Front Street, all the way from H Street, working our way down to C Street, we're gonna have to put in two new 48-inch pipes, it's gonna take us basically to the center line of, of the road, so we would in fact have to reconstruct half of Front Street, basically the north side of Front Street, all the way from H Street down to C Street, and then also working our way back up. So, in a nutshell, what we would basically be doing is, this is a, this is the, the concept plan that we used for our last ATP grant for Front Street, which was to try to redo half of Front Street for pedestrians, but we would be now placing storm drain in this north half of the road, essentially reconstructing, so when we put it back, we can put it back with the master plan in mind, so we can go ahead and reduce it down at that time to two lanes, as we reconstruct the street. So, we're, we're doing a storm drain project, but we're also making sure we're in compliance with our long-range master plan for Front Street. The current estimate, it's a little hard to see on this, and I just snapped out of it now. See if I can get back into it now. It's gonna be a little hard from this distance, but... The estimate in a nutshell for those, those components of the project is about 3.6 million. There's activity delivery, that's also included in that, so we won't, we won't mess with that unless you want to see the up-close version of the estimate there.
I'm sorry, what is that estimate again?
3.6 million for the actual project itself, for the storm drains and the, and the road work associated with it. There's activity delivered, that's just for the construction costs. And then there's activity delivery component, which I believe is approximately 450,000 or so, and that's for the planned specifications, engineering, that'd be for labor compliance, some construction management costs will be associated with that. So, total project is somewhere right around 4.1 million is what would be allocated towards this, and Linda can, can speak to the numbers if they're slightly off. But that's, that's the proposed project in a nutshell, and one that's desperately needed from a city public works, and I'm sure from the police department, fire department, public safety side of things as well.
Eric, is our K Street Basin affected by the tide? Is that outflow affected when we have high tide?
It is.
It is, that's...
Yes, no, as the, as the tide comes up, then the hydraulic capacity of those pipes goes down, just because you, the water can't get out to that lowest point that it, that it could normally.
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Weir, on the, on Front Street, if we redirect the, if you can go back to your engineering slide, that one would be fine, the first one, if we redirect that at, at H Street, so that we are sending that back to C, what is the, what is the size, because I think you have there that that's gonna be a new 36-inch front between H and F, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, what size is the current storm drain that's between H and K?
Between H and K, it, it is currently a 36-inch, there's a 36-inch pipe on the north side and a 36-inch pipe on the south side, if I remember right.
So, there's already redundant pipes down there?
There's two smaller 36-inch pipes down here, but again, that's, that's picking up all of F Street, trying to turn the corner and convey it through those pipes. So, now those pipes would be left as-is, to, to handle the rest of that drainage, so it's much smaller as far as the sheer amount of water that's gonna try to convey through there.
Do you anticipate that, and this, some of this may not be answerable until this project is done, do you anticipate that, that those storm drains are also going to have to be replaced in the near future? Obviously, we can't predict when we can, when we can actually tear into Front Street, which would be in the next time that it would be appropriate to replace those when Front Street is in the east side of this, in this case. Do you have some level of confidence that the, the two 36-inch pipes that are already there are going to last for the timeframe ahead of us?
The pipe composition, they're, they're round concrete pipes, so it's not like they're going to decay like a Cooper storm drain or the Harding storm drain, where it's the corrugated metal, where it's actually just gonna rust and disappear. The problem that we're having with the concrete pipes is that the pipe lengths are about four to six feet in length, and then you have a joint. What they do with those joints is they grout the joints, so the grout's starting to fail. That's creating some of our potholes that we're seeing on Front Street itself. So, from a capacity side, once we take the F Street Basin off of those pipes, there're gonna be plenty, large enough to handle the capacity of the stormwater passing through, but it's just there'll be some sort of rehab needed. So, at that point, we'd have to look at it, and look at the different options, whether replace them completely with HDPE pipes, as we, as we would in this case, or whether we can just go through and try to line those pipes and then compact the street around them.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Weir?
What is, what is an H, what is that other material that you were talking about?
HDPE, it's, it's high-density polyethylene or plastic, that's the, that's your, your block corrugated pipe that you see.
Is that clear?
Thank you.
Plastic for engineers?
Yes.
One last, I got a quick quid.
Yes?
Is the project designed in a manner to where if only one of the alternatives or just the base bid was funded, you could still basically do the project?
Yes, so we've designed this project to try to be scalable, so that you complete, the, the first part of the project will give you your most benefit, so the, the area that's right by the outfall, increasing that capacity is gonna have the most benefit. Then we'd have to take a look at that, you know, how far we'd extend it down Front Street versus actually taking it up C Street, because there's gonna be some true benefits taking it up C Street as well. So, base bid versus alternate, still a little bit of the details need to be worked out, but it's definitely scalable, so that we'll be able to fit it within the funding.
Okay. Is that gonna fix our problem at Fifth and D?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
I thought we had to turn a corner around that block or something.
So, and then if you look closely on this, you'll see that it actually goes up D Street to Fifth, and then turns a corner back to C, so that's that turning the corner that you're remembering.
Oh, there's green, I'm sorry, there was a reflection on it. I couldn't see the green line going up there.
So, that's part of that alternate one as indicated on this. And, you know, as with any sort of storm drain type system, when you're relying on a pipe, there's going to be a storm that overcomes it. What this project's gonna do is get it to the point though, that we're not gonna be dealing with it three or four times every year.
Perfect, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. ... Very good, thank you, Ms. Weir.
Okay, so that was the only proposal that we received this year for a public improvement project. Just for your information, we are actually not asking you to make a decision on these projects tonight, just to hear about them and hold the public hearing, and then make the decisions at the next council meeting. Staff's recommendation is to include this project in our application for, it comes out to 4,880,000 for the construction and the associated costs.
That's with alternate one and two?
Yes, yep. Under the Public Services category, we received, I believe it was nine proposals. There was one proposal from city staff, so I will let Mr. Taylor talk to you for a couple of minutes about code enforcement, and then the others, I have all of the proposals with me, and I can discuss them, and if, if anybody's here to potentially answer questions too.
Okay, thank you. You can have as long as you want.
What? Start the timer.
I will hurry through this, 'cause I know it's getting late. So, one of the things we're proposing is for an enhanced code enforcement program.
Obviously, we can't predict when we can, when we can actually tear into Front Street, which would be in the next time that it would be appropriate to replace those when Front Street is in the east side of this, in this case. Do you have some level of confidence that the, the two 36-inch pipes that are already there are going to last for the timeframe ahead of us?
The pipe composition, they're, they're round concrete pipes, so it's not like they're going to decay like a Cooper storm drain or the Harding storm drain where it's the corrugated metal, where it's actually just gonna rust and disappear. The problem that we're having with the concrete pipes is that the pipe lengths are about four to six feet in length and then you have a joint. What they do with those joints is they grout the joints, so the grout's starting to fail. That's creating some of our potholes that we're seeing on Front Street itself. So from a capacity side, once we take the F Street basin off of those pipes, there're gonna be plenty, large enough to handle the capacity of the stormwater passing through, and it's just there'll be some sort of rehab needed. So at that point, we'd have to look at it and look at the different options, whether replacing them completely with HDPE pipes as we, as we would in this case, or whether we can just go through and try to line those pipes and then compact the street around them.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Weir?
What is, what is an H, what is that other material that you were talking about?
HDPE, it's, it's high-density polyethylene or plastic, that's the, that's your block corrugated pipe that you see.
Is that clear?
Thank you.
Plastic for engineers?
Yes. One last, I got a quick quid. Is the project designed in a manner to where if only one of the alternatives or just the base bid was funded, you could still basically do the project?
Yes, so we've designed this project to try to be scalable so that you complete, the, the first part of the project will give you your most benefit, so the, the area that's right by the outfall, increasing that capacity is gonna have the most benefit. Then we'd have to take a look at that, you know, how far we'd extend it down Front Street versus actually taking it up C Street, because there's gonna be some true benefits taking it up C Street as well. So, base bid versus alternate, still a little bit of the details need to be worked out, but it's definitely scalable so that we'll be able to fit it within the funding.
Okay.
Is that gonna fix our problem at Fifth and D?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, I mean...
I thought we had to turn a corner around that block or something.
So, and then if you look closely on this, you'll see that it actually goes up D Street to Fifth and then turns the corner back to C. So that's that turning the corner that you're remembering.
Oh, there's green, I'm sorry, there was a reflection on it. I couldn't see the green line going up there.
So that's part of that alternate one as indicated on this. And, you know, as with any sort of storm drain type system, when you're relying on a pipe, there's going to be a storm that overcomes it. What this project's gonna do is get it to the point though that we're not gonna be dealing with it three or four times every year.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry, missed the...
Very good, thank you, Mr. Weir.
Okay, so that was the only proposal that we received this year for a public improvement project. Just for your information, we are actually not asking you to make a decision on these projects tonight, just to hear about them and hold the public hearing and then make the decisions at the next council meeting. Staff's recommendation is to include this project in our application for, it comes out to 4,880,000 for the construction and the associated costs.
That's with alternate one and two?
Yes, yep. Under the public services category, we received, I believe it was nine proposals. There was one proposal from city staff, so I will let Mr. Taylor talk to you for a couple of minutes about code enforcement, and then the others, I have all of the proposals with me and I can discuss them, and if, if anybody's here to potentially answer questions too.
Okay, thank you. You can have as long as you want.
What? Start the timer.
I will hurry through this, 'cause I know it's getting late. So one of the things we're proposing is for an enhanced code enforcement program. I think you all are familiar with our code enforcement that we have currently, and we have a very successful program. But I'll go through why, why this is important and it's beneficial for the entire community. Everybody within the city benefits from a successful code enforcement program. Just, just briefly, I'll go over, you know, there's always areas with blighted, vacant, abandoned properties, you can experience increased criminal activity, properties within 150 feet of vacant and abandoned buildings experience a decrease in property value. There's also, I'd extend this to blighted properties as well, can be up to 7,000 to 8,000 dollars, which, or the range can be from 4 to about 7.5 percent, studies have found. Properties located in communities with graffiti can also lose up to 15 percent of their value, just from the National Association of Realtors. Blighted areas also can experience lower employment rates and obviously, again, as I touched on, increased criminal activity. What is considered blight, you know, the main focus, I know it encompasses quite a few different things, so that's what's really an overarching program. Again, anything from vacant parcels, abandoned buildings, blighted buildings, we're talking about houses, commercial structures, in derelict or dangerous shape. I threw in the streetlights and environmental contamination, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody, public works or anything like that, but I think it's important to realize that we also have to make investment in our infrastructure as well, because we can also find ourselves the owners of blighted properties and failed infrastructure becomes blight pretty quickly and it can also impact the surrounding neighborhoods as well. These are all interrelated, all of these programs and the services that the city provides. And then some of your smaller issues, nuisance is included with overgrown lawns, of course we get that quite a bit, uncollected litter and debris and graffiti, and of course abandoned And I was just going through this, a recent article from Virginia Tech defined blight as land so damaged or neglected that is incapable of being beneficial to a community without outside intervention. And I think that's the important thing here, right? To be a benefit to the community without outside intervention. If we don't address these issues, they're just gonna continue to fester. And I can just tell you, just from over the past five, six years of dealing with code enforcement community, it's, there's just been a lot of longstanding neglect and we have had a huge issue here. And I'll, and you'll see through this, the rest of this presentation I'll go through that we've had a significant impact, but there's still a lot of work to do. And then the biggest issue, the direct cost of addressing the blight can be staggering for a community. I guess local code enforcement officials are called upon to every day to abate derelict properties, remove the graffiti and clean up the vacant lots and et cetera. I think as this council, you have a little more intimate knowledge, I think a lot of folks in the community believe, oh, you just send out a letter and you're gonna get compliance. It just doesn't work that way. And to deal with some of the bigger issues, it can be quite expensive. Quickly, I'll touch on vehicle abatement, and this can be anything from vehicles just dumped on our streets, but a lot of times, these are just people's backyards, and these are all within the city limits here, these could be your neighbors. Again, they just accumulate on people's properties. Vehicles can be anything from a boat, on a trailer is considered a vehicle, obviously trailers, anything that has wheels that can be moved is considered a vehicle. Again, they can also attract other blight and blighted conditions around them. Again, these are all within the city, these, some of these have been addressed, some of these issues are still festering. But I just wanted to just give the total presentation here, so you really see what it is we're dealing with and how important this is to the community, and how it impacts the community on so many different levels. Again, you see the vehicle, the RV in the background, and the problem is, a lot of times, just to abate these vehicles can be very costly in themselves. But you can see in this picture, you had the RV out there and you couldn't see all the other trash that was accumulating from that on the road. And again, these are bigger hazards, when you're talking about household garbage accumulating like that. And just quickly, some unsafe conditions, here's a property we abated a few years back, you can see here, this is actually, all the subflooring was gone. Actually, when I stepped into this property, I almost fell through the floor myself. Again, you can just see the sanitary conditions that are accumulating, accumulating pretty quickly. Apologize, I'll go through this, this is actually another abandoned property, but you can see also that you get transient activity, you can see here, it might be a little hard to make out, but these are syringes, so there's also drug activity, this comes back to your criminal, criminal activity that also happens within these properties. And again, this is right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. But then it can also have a huge economic impact for us as well. It's not just a social impact. Again, you look at some of these and you're familiar with a lot of these, again, this is where this property is today, this is through code enforcement efforts. Obviously, again, when I brought it back to you, we can also find ourselves the owners of some blighted properties, but you can see, we've made a huge effort to rehabilitate this property as well. I don't know if anybody, I'll do this one out as kind of a quiz, if anybody can identify this property here, you probably can't. This is one of our very first code enforcement cases, this is the CVS pharmacy site, probably, we tend to have short memories on a lot of these things, but it was the old Larry Secondhand, it was an absolute disaster out there. And that's when the city really first started taking aggressive stance on some of these properties. But as you can see, it spurs additional economic development as well as cleaning up the hazards. Again, housing stock is really important to protect. It's kinda difficult to tell here, but this, this house actually has holes all the way around it and broken windows out of it. I mean, you see to the point where it's deteriorated, you can see through the building. Again, you get a lot of criminal activity and additional accumulations of waste, you get houses in all different types of conditions.
I agree with that.
Again, it's hard to see, you're pressed by, but you can tell this property has several broken windows, there's actually a whole accumulation of household garbage right out here. This is actually the front of one of our current cases, as you walk up to the front of this house is what you see, we talk about hazardous conditions, the whole front of the structure is completely rotted out. Again, this was an older case that we had, but this is about a 30-unit apartment complex, but you can see is also we're, you're protecting the housing for everybody within the community, you're talking about the lower income range all the way up. Okay, this was another one, we talked about hazardous conditions, broken glass inside this residence, this was actually a second-story balcony and you could see it was completely rotted out. And fortunately, the person that inhabited this structure at the time had two small children, she didn't allow them to go out on this, this structure actually did wind up falling in on its own before we were able to fully get compliance. This is what it looks like today. Again, it could be commercial structures, you're probably familiar with this case, a few years ago, we actually had a whole roof collapse. Fortunately, this was a vacant building at the time, but imagine if people were in there if there was a business in this at the time. It was just lack of maintenance. Progress, so I'll go through this part really quickly, we do have a very active code enforcement program. As I just mentioned earlier though, it does take a lot of resources, a lot of financial resources to see these all the way through. We could certainly add more bodies to the street, but that's bringing in more cases. If we don't have the ability to prosecute these cases and see them through, I mean, I can come before this council and say, yeah, I have 200-plus cases pending. If I can't see any of those through, it doesn't do us any good. So we try to stay really focused on our approach, but every one of these properties I'm gonna show you now are actually, have been brought forward, are valor, have been completely abated or in the process of being abated right now. But I think the numbers speak for itself and it's kind of staggering, and this is definitely not an all-inclusive list of properties that we've dealt with, probably within about the past five years. And I do this one at the end because this was that big cleanup we had done behind Safeway a few years back, I believe we wound up removing about 11 tons of garbage out of there, including abandoned vehicles and everything else you name it. Again, we're asking for funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program. Code enforcement does meet the national objective of the program for eliminating slums and blight and benefiting low-income households of persons. Again, our obviously code enforcement program is beneficial to everybody within the city, that's what we do, we provide services for our community. Again, community benefit, and we're really, we're, we're successful by focusing on the health, the safety and the welfare of the community. It does impact the community in many different ways. So proposal right now, when I put this together, it was looking for the 2017-18 grant, we can ask for, requesting up $300,000 to fund code enforcement, that's for two years, that's the grant period. I estimate the average cost of abatement about $30,000, it could be more, it could be less. The grant will cover staff time and legal fees, specifically, or I would say the lion's share of the funding would go to those services. We would increase our current capacity over the next two years by abating an additional 10 properties total. I estimate we can probably handle an additional five properties per year, which doesn't sound like a lot, but if you look at the list that I just presented to you, add these to that, in a city of 1.6 square miles, it has a huge impact. And then for the city, of course, for our program, we're, we very aggressively go after our cost recovery, so cost recovery efforts should fund the program for a longer than two-year period. I believe we, Ms. Lever has checked in with the CDPG staff, that monies that we would receive back are not considered as program income, so they could actually go back, directly back into funding the program and future activities. And I think that obviously is a huge benefit to everybody in the city because we can extend it past that two-year period. And answer any questions if there are any, hope I didn't take too long.
Mr. Taylor, if you wouldn't mind explaining to everybody listening, and I asked you this question a while back from volunteer firemen's point of view, you look at these buildings and go and, and you think, heck, burn them suckers down, great training opportunity, but then you said something to the effect of, we don't want to deplete our housing stock. Would you explain that concept for us, please?
Sure, and that goes with anything. You know, redevelopment's expensive and it's hard to attract redevelopment in our area, and that's, and you'll hear another proposal I'll have here in a minute. Some of the structures that we did abate by burning them were beyond the capacity of being repaired. And some of those you saw, I haven't included all of them, there's a lot of the other ones that we did that we just didn't, I didn't even touch upon. And so in those instances, it really didn't make sense, and we also worked with the property owners during the abatement, they chose to go that direction, so we didn't force anybody. You know, you're obviously, really your choice is either fix it or tear it down, abate it, do something. But we don't want to deplete all of our housing stock or any of our commercial stock. You know, rehabilitation's important, and a lot of our housing stocks, it's getting older, a lot of our structures were built in the 40s and the 50s. We have a very high rate of rental properties within our city, so they, they do tend to get a lot of neglect or harder use on them. But again, we, you don't want to just go through and start tearing down every single property, you want to be able to kind of reinvent or reinvigorate your neighborhood, you want to provide that opportunity by obviously rehabilitating these properties. And we've been successful in some of the housing cases that we've had, that we have been able to rehabilitate those properties. And a lot of times, you'll see, when those properties are fixed up, the adjacent properties will start, they'll take a look and they'll start fixing up their properties as well. So it benefits everybody in that respect. Like I said, we have a lot of rental housing, so we do tend to get a lot of folks on the lower end of the income scale, they depend on that housing, so we definitely want to preserve that, as well as everybody's investment in the community. Obviously, we also benefit from property taxes, increased property tax benefits, everybody, that's how we provide the services for the community.
Any other questions for Taylor?
Does this, um, does this project for the two years, are you hiring anyone? Does this create a new position to help you?
No, and I think, like I said, if we don't have, you know, you hear people say, if you don't have the teeth, right? That's what we need, we need the end, the end of this to prosecute. I could go out in a day and bring 20, probably 20 cases forward, but if we don't have an end game, if we can't see these successfully all the way through, it just doesn't do us a lot of good. I mean, some of the smaller stuff, obviously, we can handle in-house, we send out a lot, ton of mo letters, smaller things dealing with people with their trash, but when you start getting into the substandard structures, they just take, they take a lot more, and they take up a lot more of your resources. And like I said, a lot of the lion's share of the money, a lot of times goes into the legal fees and that end of it, but we do see a lot of the cost recovery, we get those monies back.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, so as Mr. Taylor said, the, the original proposal for this was for 300,000 to be included in the 2017 application, but considering the rescinding of the RHS funds in the 16 grant, this is one that staff would recommend for the 16 grant because it's an existing program that could very quickly be just expanded to spend that money very quickly. We also received a proposal, a literacy initiative program from the Delnort Childcare Council, as you heard earlier. The requested funding was for approximately $134,000 to expand the literacy program that they provide to in-home daycare providers. Staff and our consultants' recommendation was not to include this in our application because we were advised that because of the percentages of the low-moderate income population that is served by this, that it might not be very competitive on the scoring. So that would be, I suppose, up for discussion. We do think it's a very worthy program, but the, the points just might not be there.
Because it's not just for city?
No, this one is because of the income percentages. So their proposal said that they would be serving, I believe it was 57 percent would be low-moderate income, whereas other programs serve exclusively lower-moderate income people.
I went back and looked at that, and when I looked at the, the other proposals, both from the Food Council, I think from the Food Council, theirs was like at 54 percent, which made it, it was even lower than this. So, you know, after we talked this morning, I went back and looked at all the proposals again, and so if, if, if 57 percent likely doesn't get you the points, I was a little mystified about how 54 percent would. Is it because of other objectives that more closely meet? So I just, I just wondered, in looking at the, all the proposals that we got...
So, yes, there's actually kind of two factors that we're looking at. One is the percentage of low-to-moderate income people, and we actually believe that the Food Council's proposal, which is, you know, ahead a little bit, but that their percentage would actually be much higher, once we had a chance to work with them on what, what the documentation really is, we think it's actually much, much higher than that for a food bank program. And Lori Adams just advised that from the state perspective, it, it depends on which individual person is gonna score our application, but a program for a food bank is probably gonna get some more perceived need than a literacy program.
Okay.
Not that we couldn't apply for it, but that's, we're trying to be as competitive as we can with the points, because one of the things about the fact that the funding is increased in this year, it means that they are going to be awarding far fewer cities than they did in the past. So, we don't have any idea yet how many cities or counties will apply, but we know that not very many are going to get funded.
Okay, thank you.
We received a proposal for another food bank from Rural Human Services, but as we discussed previously, we don't recommend moving forward with them at this time. So the proposal for the food bank from Community Food Council, this is one that, their proposal was in two parts. They were requesting to be allocated in the 2016 if those funds were reallocated away from the RHS program, and then also funded in 2017 application, so they were actually requesting for both. From, from what I can see in the proposal, the idea would be to use the 2016 money to basically get a food pantry up and running, and then in the 2017 to use a very larger amount of money to relocate that food pantry to a larger space, increase the services by a mobile food van that could distribute to other areas in the community and greatly expand their services. There are a couple of concerns that we have. Let me just say that at a staff level and a consultant level, we really support this, this program, and we do think that we should try to fund it. We do have a couple of concerns. Because it's not a program that's running yet, we're concerned that it may take more time than we have to get it running to spend the 2016 money before it runs out. They are going to be working on getting... They are going to be working on getting their 501(c)(3) status. They're currently operating under the Family Resource Center, which is a 501(c)(3), but ideally, the food center would have its own 501(c)(3), which it doesn't yet. So we kind of want to see how that's going to go. And also, for the long-term sustainability of this new food pantry, it really, really depends on them getting other funding besides CDBG. Because as we know, CDBG has a lot of restrictions. For example, you know, primarily serving city residents. That, that's one of the, one of the issues. One of the things that they will need to do is obtain other funding that will help support the county residents. They are working on those proposals. They are trying to make that happen. So staff's recommendation is to include them in our 2017 application so that they have some time and with, you know, with our input to try to work out some of those issues.
I guess, and I know we're not, we're, we're just taking in information tonight. My concern is if we, if we are not going to roll them into the 2016 for them to get started, to help with resources getting started, and on top of that, their, their proposal is for 400 and, I'm on the wrong page.
Fifty-nine.
$459,000, and we're proposing 265. My concern is if we're not funding it to help them get started, and then we're funding it at, at $200,000 less than what their proposal is, are, is it in essence of not going to be possible regardless of what we do? I mean, if, if they don't get the funding upfront to get started, and I'm not lobbying that we do, I'm just trying to think about this. If they don't get that to get going, and then on top of that, they only receive, they receive $200,000 less than what they're projecting, I'm just not sure how they're going to be able to provide this resource to the community. It just seems like that, that it's a, it's not possible. Now, granted, with what you said, they will also have a year's worth of time to have allocated, found more funding potentially to do this. I'm just, to me, the numbers just don't add up as a realistic proposal. But that's just my thinking. Because part of the, part of their proposal includes the idea of bringing over the other federal funding that's currently at RHS. And I don't know how anybody could, could project that RHS is going to release those funds. I'm not sure if I was in RHS, why I would want to release funds. If in fact, the CBDG has only been a portion of the funding for the current food bank, it would make sense to me that the, that RHS is going to work to try to continue with the food bank. And with that other federal funding that they have, I'm not sure why they would want to release those funds to another entity. So I guess, all this stuff, in, in looking at it, and I know we talked earlier today, it, it's hard to, to really consider these proposals when there are so many variables that we have absolutely no control.
Yes, and, and that has been a real challenge for staff as well. When we came up with our suggested numbers, what we were kind of looking at was, the Food Council was looking at $158,000 to get started, and then the 450, 59 to move forward. What we were suggesting is to basically delay that start until the next funding year, to let them see what they could get together with their other funding sources. And then instead of their first year being 158, their first year would be the two...
Sixty-five.
Two sixty-five, thank you. We realize that there are some definite challenges there. And what we would propose is that if we end up moving forward with that, that staff would work with them to try to figure out a budget that works and a plan that works, and something that would work whether they got the other funding or not. So for example, if they didn't get any other funding, you know, we, we had ideas that maybe we could talk to them about some kind of a short-term program where they could spend the money to provide a service, and then if they didn't get any other funding ever again, at least we would have gotten the service for that time while we tried to figure something else out. It's, it's possible that they could get funding from the county's CDBG application as well. I don't know if there's possibilities there. I know they were going to talk to them about that.
So they're talking about a, a mobile food pantry. And so is that 459,000?
Yeah, that's in net. That's $80,000 worth of that.
Right, but is that, are they encompassing the whole county and city in that number? And then we're just saying, well, maybe 265 would benefit the city? Is that where you're...
As far as where they, you know, develop to the number of 459, I, I wasn't there when they did that, so I can't really be sure. We, we have worked with them to make sure that they understand that the, you know, the people who benefit from this service would have to be primarily city residents. We've been very clear about that, and they think that they can meet that requirement. I guess at this point, we were also looking at the fact that if we had moved forward with RHS, the 158,000 was going to be funded for two years, and we're proposing to fund 265,000 for two years. So there would at least be significant benefit from that. But again, that, that would require us working with the Food Council, because the proposal as they submitted it, staff didn't feel confident about moving forward with it as it was. So it would require us to go back to them and see if what we're thinking, you know, if they could make that work.
I guess, and I appreciate that, and that's a piece of the puzzle that, that, I guess I hadn't been able to put together. Because what I'm, what I'm concerned with is that we make this allocation, and then for a very different set of reasons, we're a year into this, and they're not able to use these funds, and then we're scrambling to try to find somebody who's going to have to put together a proposal. We're going to have to get that reapproved, and then the, this compression of time is going to be upon us again to try to use it. So I appreciate the fact that staff is, is talking with the Food Council about maybe looking at some creative ways, if this is the funding you get, if you don't put together a traditional food bank, what would be ways that you could use this funding to benefit needy families within the city limits with food. So I, I, I appreciate the challenges that you guys are trying to put together with this.
Mr. Mayor, just one, one quick comment if I can make. Suggested that a decision's not be made tonight, and this is part of the reason, because not knowing going in tonight what was going to happen with the first item...
Absolutely.
And, and the Food Council was probably a prime example. They were doing the same thing. Well, what if you stay with RHS, and then what if you don't, and so forth, so...
Absolutely.
I'm thinking that after this public hearing tonight, staff can take this information, many of the questions that are asked by the council, and then make better define and sharpen up the, each of the proposals for the final recommendation. Even though we're making recommendations this evening, this input will help us and give us two weeks to work out some of these details as we get some idea of which way the council may be leaning on, on the various projects.
Yeah, and, and that's a very fair point. Our, our staff accountant, Ms. Lacy, has spent probably dozens of hours over the last several weeks, meeting with all of the people who presented these proposals, trying to very carefully figure out what if this happens, or what if this happens, or could we do this. And without, without having a direction, it's been, that's why there are so many options presented tonight, and why we're not asking for a decision tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there are no other questions about that one, or is everybody clear as mud on that one?
No, I forgot. Thank you.
Okay. The next one was Domestic Violence Shelter, which is Rural Human Services Harrington House, which, as we discussed, we're not recommending funding at this time. We were fortunate to receive a proposal from the North Coast Rape Crisis Team. They proposed to provide emergency services for people impacted by sexual violence, domestic violence, human trafficking. It is, it was pointed out earlier tonight, it is not exactly the same program as what Harrington House offers. It is short-term emergency shelter. They provide transportation assistance. Basically, it's somebody in crisis. They find them a hotel for anywhere from a night to a week. They provide clothing, you know, hygiene products, vouchers to take a bus. Like, for example, if somebody has family in Medford that could help them, you know, these people will get them there. If there's a shelter that can take them, they will get this person to that shelter. They can provide, you know, I think one of the things in, in the proposal was, they, they provide cell phones to people who maybe their, you know, their former partner didn't allow them to have a communication device, these kinds of services. So it's not exactly the same as Harrington House, but it is serving a similar population. It is, it is a similar need, but it just focuses more on the, you know, the crisis point, not, not a longer-term solution.
Okay.
Are there questions about that one? Okay.
Do we have an idea of what the current need is?
Um, in their...
Possible current need?
In their proposal, they were saying that they, they assist approximately eight victims a month, and they would like to increase that by 14 per month.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, we received a proposal from the Delnort Workforce Center to provide employment and training assistance to 40 students. This would provide basically sort of on-the-job training and soft skills to get these young people ready for, for the workforce. This is a program that's already existing, but this would help them continue and expand. So this is another one that staff would recommend, sort of plugging into the 16 grant as a potential for those funds. Again, because it's an existing program, they can expand it very quickly, so we wouldn't have the concern that they would run out of time. And we just think it's a really worthy program.
Okay.
The last one, under the Public Service category, was from Ink People of Eureka. They requested the full $500,000 for a very sort of wide-ranging project. It was to provide materials, equipment, and training to teachers and school leaders. And it sort of encompassed a very wide set of goals and objectives. Looking at improving school performance, looking at improving student attendance, literacy rates, graduation rates. It's a very ambitious project, and it's certainly very intriguing and could do a lot of good. But after we had our consultant look at it pretty closely, we're afraid that it would be very hard to prove to CDBG that it qualifies under their program.
These are all lofty goals, but how were they going to be achieving all of this?
That's part of the reason why we're not sure how we would be able to prove it.
I mean, I would love to prove all of this.
It's a very long-term program, so like, they're, they're talking about, they would look at improved graduation rates. But under the CDBG program, we have to show what the result was by the time the funding expires. We can't come back to them in 10 years and say, our graduation rate's improved. I mean, that would be fantastic, but it doesn't fit under this requirement.
Okay.
Okay.
We received a request under the Enterprise Fund category for microenterprise technical assistance from SBDC, to provide technical assistance to 60 clients with business assessments, counseling, workshops, and specialty training. We're not recommending it at this time, just because we already have a microenterprise program that's just getting off the ground now and is already funded for the next two years. And then, I believe, our last is a planning grant that Mr. Taylor can talk about.
Quick as possible. I believe this is the only planning grant application.
Oh, yes.
Please correct me if I'm wrong on any information. Let's see. So what we're proposing is to go after CDBG funding to prepare a comprehensive economic development plan for the city of Crescent City. Again, this would be under CDBG, so it has to provide services for the city. So plan components, and what really envision for this plan, like, when we say a comprehensive plan, it's going to have a lot of different components. But first and foremost, really needs to provide a vision for economic and business development, future, and identify specific actions to ensure success. So we really don't want this to be a plan where they just come in and look at the current conditions. We really want, we want some metrics built into this plan. We want specific actions, as I just said, for moving forward for, for business and economic development in our community. The plan must be responsive to economic development partners and have buy-in from the community. So again, really, it's about bringing all of the community stakeholders together, and really reaching out to the business community as a whole. There could be a lot of things that are missing that we just don't know about. So a big part of this, I envision getting out and just, you know, having these conversations with business owners. Again, there could be other barriers that are preventing people from coming and getting assistance, or don't know about the assistance available, such as language barriers and things of that nature. Again, include strategies to increase economic growth for existing businesses. So it's not just about tracking new businesses, it's about expanding our existing businesses. Track new businesses too, and employment opportunities. We can talk about job training, all these other things, but the jobs aren't there in the future. I don't know if it makes a lot of sense. And then identify other opportunities for economic development. Economic development comes in a lot of different forms and fashions. Obviously, benefits, one could directly benefit everybody in the community if we have an increase in TOT and sales tax. We know that really funds all, a lot of the services that we provide for our community. When you're talking about things like your streetlights, like your parks, everything that we hold dear in this city that we, we expect on a daily basis. Again, huge part of this, provide employment. We definitely want to create opportunities, not only for the folks living in our community now, but for the future, for our children. And of course, improve quality of life for all the residents within the city. Of course, you know, improved economic development conditions, they just improve the quality of life in general. Resiliency, we touched on this a little bit. I remember when Lori was here. And we would definitely want to build this into the plan. And we talk about disaster resiliency. So we talk about plan for economic diversification. Part of this could be looking at what are the risks to our current businesses and our economic situation in the event of a disaster. A bi-local plan, but this, again, would be related to kind of disaster planning to reduce capital leakage. Also, where could we get local resources in the event of a disaster? Who can we go to without having to go outside the area if that infrastructure's still in place? Financing, again, it could be how to deploy financing, where to look for this financing after, in the event of a disaster. How to rebuild the infrastructure, and of course, workforce support. Again, that would be identify vulnerabilities and put in support for displaced Why do we need a plan? Again, we provide, provide a vision and guidance. I don't think we've had, we, in the past, we've done the SEDS, which is kind of a joint city-county. The last one was done in 2011, just to give you an idea. We had, of course, that was done through the tri-agency at the time, which kind of a defunct. We don't have a tri-agency anymore. But, and I just recently went through that plan. Again, it's really kind of a broad, broader plan. And what really envisioned here is more focused plan for the city, specifically for city growth and economic development. Again, identify the needs and weaknesses for, for the community within the city. Analyze our current economic market conditions, identify actions for redevelopment, job creation, encouragement of entrepreneurship, and increased... creation, encouragement of entrepreneurship, and increased investment. And we're talking about investment, local investment, as well as investment from outside of the area. And again, the long-range vision of the plan is to create and maintain a collaborative approach to economic development with both internal and external partners. I just put this in there, don't know what you don't know. I'm not going to come up here and act like I have all the answers for economic development. Obviously, it's just a huge issue. It's a global issue, as well, as well as a local issue. So I really think the idea here is we would use the funding to find a consultant. It would be great to get an outside perspective, really gets more input for our community, what could benefit us, and really what's going on, again, like I said, regionally or globally, to see where we can benefit the most. So what we're requesting is $97,500 total. $92,000 of it would be in grant funding under the current 2017-18 application, and then that does require a $5,000 local match. I believe this was kind of semi-approved during our budget meetings. We had talked about this, putting the plan together, and I believe this lever had presented that. If we went after and were successful in the funding, that we would look at rebudgeting that at the time for the match. And again, I'll add, if we are successful in our application for any of our projects, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we would automatically get the planning and technical assistance grant.
That is true. If, if any of the projects that we apply for are approved, the planning grant is automatically approved. It's not a competitive scoring process, it's just attached to any other approval. So staff recommendation is that we go after the planning grant. The, the final issue, just to touch on briefly, is if you recall, CDBG has this whole concept of program income, which is, we have some outstanding, I'm almost done, I promise. We have some outstanding housing rehab loans. When we receive payments from those, you know, on those loans, that counts as program income if we get a certain amount in one year, and that amount is $35,000. If it's under $35,000 at the end of the year, the city can just keep it. If it's $35,000 or more, we have to spend it on a CDBG program or give it to the state. So one of the ways that we can spend it on a program is if we attach what's called a supplemental activity to our application. And all that is saying is, under this application, at any point during this 2017 contract, if we receive enough money that it qualifies as program income, here is what we would do with it. If we don't have a supplemental activity, then program income would supplant CDBG funds. So for example, you know, if we had, say, $100,000 for a planning grant, but we got, say, $40,000 in program income, if we don't have a supplemental activity, the state will say, "Well, you don't need 40 from us, you get 60." So our proposal is to go ahead and attach a supplemental activity to our application. If we don't get program income, we don't have to do it. If we do get program income, we would propose to use it for ADA improvements for ramps. It's something that we, we need to do anyway, and it's easily scalable. I believe each, you know, each ramp construction costs around $5,000. So if we got $35,000, we could build seven. If we got $40,000, we could build eight. It would be pretty simple. Okay, so I'm going to wrap up here. Just again, as a, as a reminder, what we're asking is, you know, for public hearing, you know, to receive public comments, and then if you'd like to direct staff for what you want us to maybe work on, get more information on, reach out to other partners to come back on the 5th with our final application recommendations. Well, like we talked about for the Food Council or, or any other, any of the other programs, if you want us to, to come back with more information.
Yeah, I have any public comments?
Okay. Do you have questions for me before you?
No, I think.
Okay.
Just kidding, it was very well done.
Yeah, thank you. I, just one comment, Mr. Taylor, as far as the economic development thing, I think it's a good thing, and certainly a positive venture. I would just comment that Tri-Agency is not defunct. We may not be as functional as we should be, but we're not defunct, and I would hope that whatever we do from an economic development strategy takes into consideration a future SEDs program, comprehensive economic development strategy, so that whatever we do is not a standalone, but a focused strategy that can, that can have a sense of connectivity to the overall economic development of our community as a whole, so.
Yeah, and I just put that for, because of, under the Community Development Block Grant, right, it has to.
Right.
Benefit for the city. There are also other, through EDA, another grant, and we should reach out to the county to talk about, you know, we can redo that SEDs, and there's other opportunities as well.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's about 280,000 reasons why we haven't done anything since 2011, because that's the indebtedness that Tri-Agency is struggling to deal with, and I think that when, when that gets dealt with, I hope that these three agencies and Tri-Agency becomes a viable alternative again, and that we can take what we're working on and then what also benefits this community as a whole, and look for economic development for all of us.
Yeah, and the idea, the things we have, are built into this plan would be universal.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, anybody have any other comments or questions? We're going to open up for public comment, let people weigh in, and then you'll have an opportunity, if you're still awake, to share. You guys all okay up here?
Stop it.
Okay. All right, we'll open up for public comment regarding the proposals or ideas that have been presented to us. Anybody want to come and speak?
My name's Brittany Reimer. I'm the Program Director for the Community Food Council, and I just want to explain a little bit about what we are going after with our proposal. Our real intention is to be a safety net for food security services within our community. This is a true problem. The most recent data we have from the California Center for Rural Policy shows that 28% of Del Norte-adjacent tribal land suffers from some level of food insecurity. Within our district, our school district, over 84, I mean, over 64% of schoolchildren are on free or reduced lunches and breakfasts. For many schools within Crescent City, this number is even higher. So we see this as a true need within our community, and we're trying to step in if the Rural Human Services Food Bank is no longer able to operate at full capacity. We submitted 2016 and 2017 funding proposals, not knowing whether or not rural services would still be funded. It is important to note that their Community Development Block granting, Block Grant funding for the Food Bank was the largest source of funding they had for staff time. So even though they are still the recipients of large amounts of state and federal funds that can go to purchase food, they no longer have a strong source for staff funding. So they will be operating off of either a part-time coordinator or volunteer for their Food Bank services. Our proposal is for us to use 2016 funding to open a small pantry and use that time to be working with the city and with Rural Human Services to be relocating a large-scale food bank underneath a new house. That would require, that would require collaboration with the city, with Rural Human Services, and with the Community Food Council. There's a lot of unknown variables within this. We, we didn't know this was something that we would be trying to be a safety net for until about a month ago, and so we've been trying to piece together a plan without knowing what services will be funded, what funds can be transferred from RHS to a new home. So there's a lot of, as has been brought up, there's still a lot of unknown variables, but our goal is to be a safety net for the community, and the idea of not having a fully-staffed food bank within Crescent City would put a large number of families at risk of greater food insecurity than they're already experiencing. I'm happy to answer any questions about the proposals that we put forward in terms of what was brought up about the percentage of low and moderate income. The Family Resource Centers are sponsoring organization, and their geographic address is located at the intersection of three different census tracts. One of them is 54%, the other one is, I believe, 64%, and the other one is 69%. So we're right at the junction of three different census tracts, and since we don't have a program already operating, we had to use the security, so we expect the number will be even higher than the average of those three census tracts. I'm sorry that there's so much uncertainty, but I hope that we can work with the city and with Rural Human Services to figure out how to shuffle all the resources around to increase food access within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany.
Brittany, I do have one question for you, and, and I'm not asking you to, like, make a commitment on behalf of the Food Council, but one of the staff recommendations has been to not do the 16, but to do the 17. Do you think that, that it is realistic for the Food Council to keep working towards this if, in fact, the council does not fund the 16 money? Is it, is it something the Food Council is committed to that says, now that the decision has been made not to fund RHS, that we're going to keep working on this even if that means it's not right now?
I think having 2016 and 2017 funding would facilitate a transition much more easily than having a year of waiting, and also just the idea of having lowered funding coming into Crescent City for food security services for a whole year. That's going to be hard to keep the ball rolling once it's slowed down so much. And so while we would, of course, keep on going if it was only 2017 funding granted, I think momentum would be lost. Reworking the 2017 grant funding into a lower amount, I, I think that is definitely something that could be worked out through negotiations with RHS of what are their resources, and how can we work together, and how can we work with the city's resources together. But the idea of not being funded for a year and then being funded after that seems like momentum and services would be lost.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Has the.
Keep trying to get away.
Has Community Food Network, sorry.
Council.
Council. You're looking into 501(c)(3) status for the new Food Bank, correct?
For the Community Food Council overall.
Okay.
Yeah.
How is that going, and do you have a timeframe of when you possibly will be getting that? Or if you.
It would probably, it would probably take at least, at least six months. We're not close, at least six months. Right now, we're housed under the Family Resource Center. Their intention is not to be a large-scale food bank within Crescent City. Our intention is to ensure that there is a fully-staffed, large-scale food bank within Crescent City, so they want to be a transition space as we're helping to create a small pantry and then transition into a larger one while getting our nonprofit status.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, other public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the, to the council. Any, any thoughts for staff based on the information you've received tonight that you would like them to take into consideration prior to bringing this back for potential decisions on September 5th?
We hope for a smaller number to make the decision easier, but, but no, thank you. I don't have any issues.
I, I have, I have two things that, that, that I guess I would ask staff to at least explore, and because right now, given the earlier action that we took, the staff's recommendation is to allocate $85,000 to the Workforce Center and $231,280 to, to code enforcement for the 16 money. I would like to at least explore two other possible options for 2016, one being what would be the, the, the minimum number if we wanted to proceed with the Food Council. In other words, could we do 85 with the Food Council and then be able to, to leverage that money into getting started as one idea? And they may say, "No, we can't do that." The other would be also to offer that same question to the literacy program. Could, could you use 16 money, because that's something that's already in place? Could you use this $85,000? How would, how, what would that look like? I'm not saying that one of those should be chosen as opposed to staff's recommendation, but just in looking at all of these, I'm just trying to come up with as many options as we can get to look at that will benefit this community the most, and there's a lot of worthy options here. But I, I would like to at least see the possibility of those two things, so that maybe in front of us are three possibilities for 16. And I'm not trying to say that the Workforce Center is not worthy, they're all worthy, but that's, that's my input. I appreciate all the work you guys have done and all the work the community has done to put these proposals together. It's, it's exciting. It's exciting that, that we've had this many proposals. What's discouraging is, is the year that the money doubles, the activity level is cut in thirds. It's just frustrating. It's like, gives us twice the amount of money. Not that we don't, not that the, the infrastructure project is not important, obviously it is, but the idea that the money doubles and then we have to lose one activity is, is just, just feels like something the state would come up with, or the federal government. Oh, they did, I'm sorry. Well, but we want to make as good a decision as we can, so that you guys, staff, appreciate the information and all the work that you guys have done. It's exemplary. You don't get told that enough, and hopefully we can make a good decision that's going to benefit our community for years to come. Any final word, Mr. Young? Did you have anything that you wanted to input? Okay. Good, we'll, then we'll take that on advisement, and we will address that again on September 5th. We have one item left on our agenda, and that is a right-of-way use agreement with Astound Broadband LLC. Mr. Young, Mr. Weir, who's, who's going to jump on this?
Mr. Weir, if he makes a short presentation.
A short presentation.
All right, just let me bring up my next PowerPoint. We'll talk all about right-of-way use agreement. No, it's been a, definitely been a long night. So it's for use right-of-way use agreement with Astound Broadband, or WAVE Business, as they're, they're better known as, and this is an overall agreement for this particular telecommunications company to have the right to, to put their facilities within our right-of-way. For every project that they do, for every new installation, they'll also have to pull an encroachment permit, which at that point, we'll look at the, the details of the project and make sure it complies with our construction standards and whatnot. So this, this agreement's more of an overarching agreement, and then it'll be added to as they proceed to install their infrastructure via the, the encroachment permit process. In general, one of the other big components of this was, do they need to pay franchise fees or not? And telecommunications companies are governed by the California Public Utilities Code, which authorizes them to, to basically construct their infrastructure in the right-of-way without the franchise fee applying. If they venture into cable communications, then at that point in time, or cable service, like cable, cable television, then at that time, they would have to pay a franchise agreement. So this is just for data services. Data services include the telecommunications piece, possibly voiceover IP-type services or internet-type services. This particular project, the initial phase is going to be to put in their, their infrastructure from the tower that's located right adjacent to the Crescent Fire Protection District, Fire Department located off Washington, connect into the tower that's located at our yard, the City Corporation Yard off of 9th Street, and then to a tower that's located off of Norris Avenue adjacent to Elk Valley, Elk Valley Road. So in doing so, the majority of this infrastructure's going to be placed overhead, but there are going to be a couple of spots where they'll go underground, like Amador Street, and then they'll drop down near our yard as well. So in a nutshell, that's, that's what's before you, is that overall agreement. Overall agreement, some, some notable provisions, they must acquire an encroachment permit, they'll have to pay for any damages, obviously that occurs to any of our facilities, they must provide us as-built drawings, as well as if we ever need them to relocate their utilities, either underground or, or just relocate them because we have infrastructure that needs to go through, they have to do that at their cost. And then also, this is a, this is a 10-year term on this agreement, and it'll, it'll be up for renewal every five years, and as long as they're in compliance with all the, the provisions under the, the CPCN, and also full compliance with any of our ordinances, then, then it should be renewed. Questions?
What's the cost on an encroachment permit? Is it based on the percentage of the cost of the, of the work that they Is it based on the percentage of the cost of the work that they do?
Based on the percentage of the cost of the, exactly.
So it's a one-time cost when they install all of these?
Yeah. And it's basically, the purpose of the encroachment permit is to pay for our staff to go out, make sure it's put into our standards, and it complies with the construction standards.
And in the area by Amador where they're going to go underground, they responsible for subbing out a contractor that's going to cut the street and do all that?
Yes, they'll have to have the properly licensed contractor to do work within the streets. It would be a Class A contractor or a contractor with a specialty license to either do street work or concrete work, or whatever it takes.
Okay.
And then in areas outside the city, they'll be required to have an encroachment permit either from Delnart County or Caltrans.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions? Okay, very good. Any public comment regarding this right-of-way agreement? Seeing none, close public comment, bring it back to the council for action.
I move we approve the right-of-way use agreement with Astound Broadband to install and maintain communication infrastructure within the city right-of-way.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Pro-Tim Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, all right. Do you have one item under City Council items, a legislature, there's a letter of support for the Delnart County grant application for No Place Like Home. I guess I just need consensus. I trust that you all, it was included in your packet, wasn't it? Was it not? Okay. Is, do we have consensus that we send this letter of support?
Yes.
Okay. We probably ought to, Scott, we probably ought to make sure copies go to the county as well. I didn't want to, when I wrote the letter, I didn't notate it, but we probably should make sure that it goes to Tony Self, so she has a copy of it with their application. Mr. Young, you have a city manager report for us?
What I've been doing for the last two weeks, working on this, manager applications, which you'll be doing interviews this weekend, and working with Mr. Weir on the storm drain project. And I did make a field trip or two out to the elevated tank project, which I've asked Mr. Weir maybe in September to make a brief presentation of how that project is moving ahead. That's about all I have.
One more.
No. Wait a minute. You're not on the agenda for a third time? Okay.
No, just wanted to announce that the Pebble Beach PID project, Project Initiation Document Project, where we're looking at concepts for Pebble Beach between 6th Street and Brother John and the Lookout Preston Island, we're going to have a public meeting on that. It's a week from tomorrow at the treatment plant. It'll be from 4:30 to 6 o'clock, just looking at the initial concepts and taking public comment on that. So we're going to start to push that as a press release, but wanted to announce it tonight.
It's August 29th. At what time?
At 4:30.
4:30.
At the wastewater treatment plant. The consultant we've hired, Green Dot Transportation Solutions, has a couple of concept designs, and so this is a good time for the public to get involved and give us their opinion on some of the different options.
So we're having a PBBID.
Oh, God.
I just didn't, I just did that. I did, I had to write it down so I could say it. Okay.
See you tomorrow.
Yes. All right, council, do you want to give brief reports, or you just want to say we're doing the best we can?
Got very little. Got very little surgery. Had to skip the Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting due to a family emergency and went to our regular and special meetings.
I had one meeting in the last two weeks, and it was the Delnart Solid Waste Management Authority meeting on the 15th.
Attended our regular and special meetings, had my first day of class at Humboldt State today.
Congratulations. How'd it go?
Very well.
Were you on time?
Yeah.
Good. That's why you needed that license.
Mm-hmm.
It's a good deal. All right, awesome. That's good. Well, I'm going to share a couple things. We did have a solid waste meeting. Congressman Huffman was here. Some of us, I know Councilmember Keim was there to listen to public input regarding a bill that he has, he's proposing or authoring. We did have a chamber mixer with an opening of a new business downtown painting.
Art and wine.
Art and wine, well, painting. Art and wine, neat, neat new little shop downtown that's economic development at work. We had our CBDG workshop. I just think that we've got so many things that are going on in our community that are positive, that we need to highlight those things. And it's hard when we're facing difficult decisions that may have negative connotations to them, to forget, that we forget that there are positive things happening in our community. We've got new businesses opening. We have existing businesses that are thriving, old businesses that are getting revived. And so we've got some good things happening in Crescent City, and I think that all of us should be proud to be leaders. And the Pro-Tim is telling me it's time to say that we are adjourned to our next meeting, which will be a special meeting of the City Council for interviews for the city manager on Saturday, August 26. We are adjourned. Bye.